Ms. Smith. Councilmember Danuski.
Here.
Mayor Baker.
Here.
Councilmember Herbig.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Van Ness.
Here.
Councilmember Sperry.
Here.
Councilmember Curtis.
Present.
All right. If you will please stand and join me in the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. If there are no objections, the agenda will stand approved as written. Next item on the agenda is a proclamation. Whereas the issues of affordable housing and homelessness have hit a crisis point across King County, and whereas in 2016, one night, count found 135 people in the north end of the county sleeping outdoors or in their vehicles, and in the 2015-16 school year, there were 202 students identified as homeless by the North Shore School District, and whereas nearly 20% of Kenmore households are considered housing insecure because they are spending more than half their income on rent and utilities, and whereas all people should have access to a safe, healthy, and affordable homes, and whereas affordable housing is a critical component of making homelessness rare, brief, and one time, and whereas the City of Kenmore pledges alongside other King County communities to raise public awareness of the critical need to preserve and increase affordable housing availability in our communities, and whereas the City of Kenmore recommits to the global, to the goal of ensuring that all people in our community live with dignity in a safe, healthy, and affordable homes. And I therefore, David Baker, Mayor, City of Kenmore, on behalf of the City Council, am pleased to proclaim the week of May 15th to 22nd, 2017, as Affordable Housing Week in the City of Kenmore, and I urge all citizens and community organizations to join with the City Council in this observance. And Jill Palmquist, are you here from Hope Link? Wonderful. All right, we have one more to go. Whereas, the Target Zero Initiative was adopted by the City of Kenmore in April of 2014 with a goal of achieving zero pedestrian and bicyclist fatalities and serious injuries in Kenmore by 2025 by increasing awareness of pedestrian, bicycle, and driver safety issues. And whereas, Kenmore City Council's top priority is to focus on and emphasize multimodal transportation safety in Kenmore with specific focus on pedestrian, bicycle, and other means of travel, and whereas bicycling and walking improve people's health, save money in household budgets, and improve people's general well-being and expressed happiness, and whereas all people deserve to be able to get where they are going safely, whether by driving, riding, transit, walking, or bicycling, and whereas throughout the month of May, the residents of Kenmore and its visitors will experience the joys of bicycling throughout, through educational programs, celebrations, activities, or by simply getting out and going for a ride. And whereas, Kenmore's road and trail system attracts bicyclists each year, providing economic health, transportation, tourism, and scenic benefits, and whereas creating a bicycling-friendly community has been shown to improve citizens' health, well-being, quality of life, growing of the economy of Kenmore, attracting tourism dollars, improving traffic safety, supporting student learning outcomes, and reducing pollution, congestion, and wear and tear on our streets and roads. Now therefore, I, David Baker, Mayor, City of Kenmore, Washington, on behalf of the City Council, am pleased to proclaim the month of May 2017 to be Bike Month in the City of Kenmore, and I urge all citizens and community organizations to join with the City Council in this observance. Melody Yenick, you're accepting this. All right, next item on the agenda is citizen comments. This is an opportunity to express your views on issues that are important to you and to the community, and we ask that you please limit your comments to three minutes. There's going to be, I think, four opportunities tonight to do public comments. This one is general, but we're also going to be talking about the safety improvements throughout the city, and you can certainly address those when they come up. We will be talking about the improvements on 84th Street first, and then we'll be talking about chicanes on a couple of the other streets, and then we're going to be talking about roundabouts. So, you can, you will have opportunities to speak before or after staff presentations on each one of those. So, with that, if the clerk wants to call the first person.
Wendy Reynolds. Okay, my name's Wendy Reynolds. I live on 84th Avenue Northeast. I wanted to, first of all, thank you for listening to the citizen comments about the traffic. I guess you guys are still calling it an improvement on our street, but I just, I wasn't going to say anything tonight, but on my way home today, a UPS truck was sitting at the top of my street, waiting to turn onto Simons', and I couldn't turn onto 84th until he moved. So I appreciate that you guys have been listening, but I just want to point out that that curve, turn is too tight, and it needs to be repainted before something permanent goes in there. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reynolds. I hope you stay and hear the discussion.
Jill Palmquist. Good evening, Mayor, and members of the Council, and members of the community. My name is Jill Palmquist, and I work in Kenmore at Hope Link's Kenmore Place Family Shelter. I'm here to thank you for proclaiming April 15th through the 22nd as Affordable Housing Week, and for your recognition of the urgent need for affordable homes in our community. As your proclamation states, too many students in our classrooms do not have a stable place to call home, and too many families in our city are struggling just to stay housed. Our goals for Affordable Housing Week are not only to call attention to the level of need, but also to highlight policy solutions and the important work that is currently being done to make a difference. Please note that your support makes a huge difference in the lives of people like Alex, who I've had the privilege of moving into our shelter recently, along with her family of two little girls and her spouse. When they moved in, they were moved to tears because for the first time in months, they were able to sleep on a bed rather than in their car or on the street. We hope that you will join us for some of the events we have planned, and would also encourage you to participate in the week by planning a visit to meet people who are guests in shelters or residents of affordable homes in your city. Hope Link and others participating in the week would be happy to assist with this. Please let me know if you'd like to visit Kenmore Place. I would love to show you around. Beyond the week, we hope that you will continue to support affordable homes with all the tools available to you. Thank you again for taking the time to issue this proclamation and for your dedication on this issue.
Thank you very much.
Bob Black.
Bob Black, Kenmore, Washington. I'd like to address Simons' and 84th. I did not believe it possible to make things worse at the intersection of Simons' and 84th until Friday, the 21st, when strapping for the crosswalks across 84th on both the north and south sides of Simons' was put down. It is now visually confusing as to where the center line for that road is. The turns are much too sharp and the road much too narrow upon entering 84th, whereas it was not before. Vehicles need to turn or crossing over into the oncoming traffic. The planners must be removed. Return this to the previous configuration, both north and southbound, with the only changes being either a Watts or Seminole-style speed humps to provide for the traffic calming that everyone's asking for. We drive in neighborhood. We drive and live in this neighborhood. Is the city trying to make Kenmore undrivable? The citizens seem to have lost all faith that the city can do anything correctly when it comes to roads and infrastructure. If it is funds you are seeking, take the TBD fund, of which $15 goes to the city and $5 goes to the state, along with the franchise fees collected from water, sewer, electric, and cable, and fix this section of road. And not with planners and paint, but with speed humps and a traffic light, with pedestrian crossing controls across both 84th and Simons'. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Black.
Steve Kops.
Hi, I'm Steve Kops at 8307 Northeast 166th Street. So that's just the same block as where the chicane is off Simons' and 84th. And I really want to commend the city for trying that approach. It seems very sensible to me. There's been a lot of outcry. We've heard some here tonight, and I don't buy into it. I think that they are performing as intended. Maybe they could be improved, slightly different placement, but what I'm seeing, I go through that intersection at least once a day, is a much calmer, safer intersection. And you should be commended, frankly, rather than pilloried, for trying an innovative and cost-effective approach. So thank you very much for your work, and thank you for hearing my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Kops.
There are no more citizens signed up to speak.
Anybody else wishing to speak? Yes, please come forward, and if you will, sign up when you're finished.
Lynda Peterson. I live on 73rd Avenue, and one of my concerns is the sidewalk, or the lack of sidewalk, from the Swamp Creek Bridge up until and past the Swamp Creek, Wall Swamp Creek Park. That's a very dangerous part of the road, and I see kids and adults trying to walk from the grade school up to the park on the road, and it's almost a blind curve, and there's no safe shoulder there. So I would like to see the Council look at funding for continuing the sidewalk from just beyond the Swamp Creek Bridge, where it is now, up clear to where the intersection is, up to the junior high school, where the sidewalk continues at that point. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Thank you for your comments, Ms. Peterson. We certainly will look at continuing the sidewalk. We only go to our city limit, though, and that's all of it, because the rest is Snohomish County. So, anyway, we'll certainly look at that. The others that spoke on the traffic calming procedures, we are going to be discussing those each one at a time, and we appreciate your comments, but stay tuned. You'll have another opportunity to express your concerns after the staff gives us presentations, and we'll deal with them one at a time. So, anyway, next ish, next item on the agenda is Consent Agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
And I'll second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent Agenda stands approved unanimously. Next item on the agenda is a presentation, Puget Sound Energy, Energize Eastside Project. Booga Gilbertson, Senior VP of Operations, Dama Moore, Public, Local Government and Public Policy, and Julian Low. Julian, are you in on this one? Okay, so Kara Durbin, Senior Local Government Affairs Representative. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor and Council, as you noted, we have a really good contingent of Puget Sound Energy staff here with us tonight, and senior managers, to talk about Energize Eastside Project. Dama Moore will introduce his colleagues who are presenting with him, and as you mentioned, he is Local Government and Public Policy Manager. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Ausley. I'm Dama Moore, Local Government Affairs and Public Policy Manager for Puget Sound Energy. I appreciate you allowing us this time to address the Council, Mr. Mayor, Council members, and thank you, Mr. Carl Lindsey, for your cooperation and collaboration to do this as well. As you have heard in the past, we've been before you to talk about some of the local reliability issues surrounding Kenmore. Tonight, we want to bring a little bit more focus to a more regional issue in regards to the Energize Eastside project that's going on. As Booga Gilbertson, our Senior Vice President of Operations, and Kara Durbin, our Senior Local Government Affairs Representative, will discuss with you, there is a very important regional impact that'll be covered as well, too. So with that, let me turn it over to our Senior Vice President, Booga Gilbertson.
Thank you. And thank you, Mayor Baker and City Councilmembers, for inviting us here this evening. I'd also like to acknowledge the City Manager, Mr. Robert Carl Lindsey, for bringing this important reliability matter to the forefront. Tonight... Thank you. Tonight, we'd like to talk about Puget Sound Energy's plans to site and build a new transmission line to deliver dependable power for the greater east side communities. And first, I'd like to address what this project is about and why it's important. First, the greater east side is growing faster than any other area in Washington State. And while this tremendous growth means great things for our economy, it's also straining the greater east side's electric system. Our electric infrastructure simply can't keep up. Our customers are meeting very aggressive and ambitious energy conservation targets, but conservation alone isn't enough to keep up with the growing demand for electricity. And then finally, the time for our electric infrastructure, it's nearing capacity. Now is the time to upgrade it in order to maintain reliable power for all of the greater east side. This project is required to meet mandated federal regulations. It is not optional. Following the northeast power blackouts of 2003, the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, or FERC, established federal reliability regulations. These federal regulations require PSE to have sufficient infrastructure to meet foreseeable growth and demand of electricity. Additionally, multiple studies conducted over the last four years all confirm that this is, that this project is needed by the winter of 2017 and 2018 to both maintain reliable power for the east side communities and to meet our reliability standards. So the Energize Eastside Project will upgrade existing transmission lines and build a new substation to keep the lights on for years to come. Kara?
As Booga indicated earlier, this region has grown dramatically over the past several decades, and it continues to grow, and I know that's no surprise to you. We're talking about a transmission system that was last upgraded in the 1960s, and since then, our population's been grown by almost eightfold, and it's projected to continue to grow. Specifically, on the greater east side by 2040, all east side jurisdictions are expected to grow by more than 33%, and employment likewise is also booming, expected to grow by more than 73%. And Kenmore is growing just as rapidly as the east side cities that you see on this slide, as I'm sure you're well aware, looking at PSRC numbers, your growth is considered to be just as dramatic or even more so projected going forward towards 2040.
As we just highlighted, population and employment growth are expected to continue. And as your energy company, we need an electric system that can keep up with that growth. So how exactly does all this growth impact our existing electricity system? This graph in front of you shows the existing capacity of our transmission system that serve the east side area, and when our demand for electricity is projected to exceed the capacity of our system. More specifically, the red line that is shown horizontally in the middle of the graph shows the current capacity of the east side electric system. In other words, how much electricity the system can provide to customers. The system capacity is shown as a band or a range of that red across the center of the graph. When electricity use is below that range, the system can operate and supply dependable power. When electricity use approaches or is above that range shown in red, it strains the electric system, and it can increase the risk of power outages. The upward sloping blue line represents forecasted customer demand for electricity on the east side, assuming that customers continue to meet 100% of energy conservation targets. So even with aggressive energy conservation efforts, you can see that the east side's electricity demand reaches capacity by the winter of 2017 to 2018. That's when the blue line crosses the red line. The upward sloping yellow line, that is just immediately above the blue line, shows the demand level our electricity system would experience if customers only achieved 75% of conservation goals. This would cause electricity demand to exceed the system's capacity even sooner. Next, I'd like to provide just a brief background for context of how power gets to the greater east side area. First, the purple lines. The purple lines. The purple lines show the bulk transmission, or 230 KV, some say 230 kilovolt, transmission lines. They bring power to the greater east side area. Next, power is transmitted to the many east side communities through 115 kilovolt transmission lines that are shown in blue. And then finally, power is delivered to local, through local distribution lines to serve local homes and businesses, and that's signified in the green in the legend on this particular graphic. So how would Energize Eastside change the existing transmission system? In short, it would add much-needed capacity to serve the densely populated and growing east side communities. Today, the bulk 230 KV transmission lines, which again are shown in purple, form a ring around Lake Samamish in the shape of a backwards C. Those purple lines start at the top of the map, and they run south a little bit to a location in Redmond with the label called Samamish on this graphic. The purple lines then ring around Lake Samamish. They go to the west in Renton at a location called Talbot Hill. And these 230 lines support all of the cities in the greater east side area. While you can see an existing 115 KV transmission line that runs north to south between Talbot Hill and Samamish, in other words, between Redmond and Renton, these blue 115 KV transmission lines simply don't have the capacity that's needed. There is no bulk 230 KV line between major substations in Renton and Redmond. In other words, there is no purple line. This is the missing link in the electric transmission system serving the greater east side. The Energize Eastside Project solves this missing link and connects the 230 KV system, adding the much-needed capacity that is needed. So why does this matter for Kenmore? If no solution is implemented by the winter of 2017, 2018, the electric system's increased reliance on corrective action plans will increase the possibility of rolling blackouts to approximately 130,000 customers, including customers in Kenmore. More specifically, if PSE were to take no action to solve the east side's transmission capacity deficit, the east side will become increasingly vulnerable to power outages. When the electric system is stressed by peak load and heavy use, PSE will use corrective action plans to protect the existing infrastructure. These corrective action plans may include intentional rolling blackouts to more than 130,000 customers, and that would help ensure the overall reliability of the greater transmission system. Use of corrective action plans are part of meeting the required reliability requirements that I mentioned earlier. Corrective action plans that include rolling blackouts would need to be announced publicly, and we realize that even discussion of these plans could cause serious concerns for the economy and for our communities. And I can tell you, as the head of operations for your energy provider, it is completely unacceptable to plan to use rolling blackouts to meet forecasted load growth. It's our job to build the infrastructure that's needed to serve our growing communities. Kara?
So once we had identified our transmission deficiency problem on the east side, we really looked at a number of ways we could address that deficiency. And in other words, what's the best way to solve what was a local delivery problem for the east side? And so through our studies and our work, we looked at a number of different solutions. We looked at battery technology. Could we use battery storage to meet the need? We looked at using more renewable energy. Could we use solar panels and micro turbines or small-scale wind to patch together and solve that deficiency? We looked at whether we could build a local power plant near the center of the load growth that we'd seen and to meet that demand and see if that would be an option. And we took another hard look at conservation, and could we be even more aggressive than we are currently and use distributed generation, or demand-side management, or other tools to eliminate or potentially delay the need for this transmission? And all of these options, we studied thoroughly through a series of reports that we did, as well as they have been looked at through the environmental review process led by the cities. And so all of that information is up on our website, and we're happy to get that to you. Ultimately, after studying a number of solutions, we concluded that the most reliable and cost-effective solution for PSE that would solve this local delivery problem was Energize Eastside, which would meet that, not only meet the delivery problem, but also meet our federal reliability requirements. As Booga outlined earlier, the key components of that are a new substation and transformer near the center of the load on the greater east side, upgraded transmission lines to 230 to deliver power to homes and businesses, continued aggressive conservation on the part of our customers that's built into our assumptions for the project. And you can think back to the blue and yellow line that Booga indicated on that graph. We're assuming aggressive conservation as part of this plan. All those things together combine to make the Energize Eastside Project work that we're proposing to do. So we've been at this project for a while. We launched this in 2013 and immediately began a year-long community advisory group process, working with the community, listening and learning from them, and analyzing a number of different route options that we could pursue to connect, to connect, as Booga indicated, that missing link between Redmond and Renton. And we also looked, in 2016, we looked at a number of different, we did field work, we worked on outreach with property owners, and we began environmental review both in 2015 and in 2016. Looking forward to 2017, we are hoping to wrap up environmental review soon, expecting the draft DIS to come out in May of 2016. We're continuing field work and refining our design, and we anticipate submitting for permits this summer, working with the cities on issuance of those, and then proceeding from there to construction. So with that, thank you very much for your time tonight, and we really appreciate the opportunity, and we'd be glad to answer any questions you have.
Questions? Deputy Mayor?
Looking at where those lines cross the red line, that's not too far away. And the slide previous to this had bars of the different phases of your project, and you get into construction out 2018. How long's it take to... How long's it take to build these lines? I mean, are you talking towers and high-tension power lines? That's not something that goes up overnight, is it?
It is not something that goes up overnight. In some of the send-ahead materials, there were photo simulations of what the construction would look like, and there are a number of examples also shown on the website. They will be predominantly what we call mono-pole or single-pole construction. So one pole with insulators off either side, and the wires will be connected to those insulators. So they don't go up overnight, but I will tell you that the construction phase of this overall project is by far the shortest phase. And so after we get through the permitting phase, we do plan to move immediately into construction, and we've been doing a number of preliminary design work. So we have many, 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 many steps that we've already taken so that we're ready to begin construction.
So you anticipate the solution being in place before we reach that crossing and start having the rolling brownouts?
Yes, I want to clarify two things. That's absolutely our goal, that is our intent, that's what our construction schedule is. And the rolling blackouts, as part of meeting our federal mandated reliability requirements, we will need to have a plan for that should certain contingencies occur. It is our hope and our expectation that we will be able to have enough corrective action plans or contingency actions that we can take to avoid that. I will tell you that we have every intention of doing everything we can to avoid that.
Yeah, thank you. Councilmember Smith?
Thank you. I had just a couple of questions. One, are the new buildout, does that take place in the existing easement corridors that are already there?
It's primarily along the existing corridor, yes. That's the, it's the final route selection or the final permits are not issued yet. Of course, we haven't filed for those, and the draft environmental impact will be out in a month, as Kara said, but it is primarily along the existing corridor.
Okay, thanks. And first, I appreciate you coming in and giving us the details on this, and we had had some information on this earlier, but I'm curious, is there a city action item that you're requesting from us on this, or is this strictly an informational?
This is an informational, and certainly you saw how Kenmore is affected by this, and it's an informational item.
Thank you.
Your Honor, if I may also attempt to answer that question. So you remember Sound Transit 3, and there was a community group called 522 Transit Now that formed? Well, similarly with this, there's a community group called Cure, and it's called Communities United for Reliable Energy, and they're coming out in favor of this Energize East Side proposal. And there's a number of citizens, but there's also a number of businesses and other entities, healthcare. We just received word that the Bothel, Greater Bothel Chamber of Commerce signed on in support of this project and signed on in support of Cure. And so what I recommend is that if you are supportive of what you see tonight, and if you generally want to see this move forward, then we could have somebody from Cure come back in the near future, perhaps in May, and you can consider whether you want to sign on in support of Cure.
Any other questions?
I would like your direction on whether you want a presentation from Cure and consider signing on with them.
Well, I would tell you, I would appreciate having them come. I just feel like this, it's hard for me to understand why somebody wouldn't be in favor of this unless it's in your backyard. Other than that, it seems like we have a pretty significant relationship in seeing that this gets built out.
And I think there is a lot of that in your backyard going on. I think there's a lot of opposition going on in Kirkland and Bellevue and in our neighbors, so.
And I think that as long as it's, if your support is for Cure is at a high level, I think that's fine, as long as we're not getting into exact routes and whose backyard it's going through, as long as council's looking at it and supporting it at a high conceptual level, then I think that would be appropriate.
Councilmember Sperry?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, we have spent a lot of time and effort, and I know our staff has worked quite a bit with you trying to get reliability to our city, and I would think that anything that would continue that positive reliability, and I can't imagine announcing we were having a rolling blackout. That would not be something anybody wants to do. So to me, it seems very logical in terms of the direction that we've been on.
Councilmember Danuski?
So thank you for coming out and keeping us informed. It's a good presentation. I'm in favor of having Cure come out, but I would want to keep it, our support, at a pretty high level. We don't need to be going into nitty-gritty's on, for Kenmore.
Yeah, there's a lot of relationships that we have. We've got to be, so yes. All right. High level, you got the information you need?
Yeah, and I know you're not, you can't speak for Cure, but is the assumption that we can keep it at a high level when Cure comes back and talks to us?
I would think so, yes.
Okay. All right.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you again.
Next item on the agenda, Neighborhood Transportation Plan Program Update. We're going to do this in three parts. We're going to take a look at, come on, you can do this. We're going to take a look at the pedestrian and bicycle safety improvements on 84th Avenue, and we're going to get a staff report on that, and then we'll take comments, and then we're doing the traffic calming chicanes, and then we'll take comments on that after a staff report, and then we'll do residential traffic circles.
Thank you, Your Honor. My name's Rob Karlinsy, City Manager for the City of Kenmore. And up here at the table with me, to my far left, I have Chris Overleas, our Public Works Director, and also, she's also our City Engineer. And then to my immediate left, we have Brett Shock, our Traffic Engineer. So just to give you a little background for the community's background, Kenmore incorporated in 1998. Prior to that, we were unincorporated. King County, we grew up kind of rural, unincorporated county, and prior to 1998, Kenmore didn't have much in the way of pedestrian and bicycle safety improvements and hardly any sidewalks back then. And the roads back, way back when, in the 1900s, were primarily designed for automobile travel, moving cars, motorists as quickly and efficiently as possible. Definitely an automobile-oriented way of looking at the world back in the 40s, 50s, 60s, when Kenmore was developing and most of its roads were being built. Fast forward to 2014, Kenmore continues, you know, has been part of a rapidly growing part of the King County and East Side area, and urbanizing quite quickly. And there's more cars on the road, but there's also more pedestrians and bicyclists that have been coming on the road. And ever since incorporation, the city councils of the City of Kenmore have been putting sidewalks as a priority and improving that multimodal transportation, but it became even more of a priority in 2014. And take you back in time about three years to a really troublesome month, a really sad and just tragic month back in 2014, and that was March of 14. We had two young people die in crosswalks within four days of each other in March of 2014. And it was a terrifying, tragic, scary time. That week, there were actually three pedestrians hit in crosswalks that week. The third one survived and only had minor injuries. But the community, rightly so, was very upset. We all were. We held a pretty big meeting soon thereafter. We encouraged the community to come. This room was filled with residents of Kenmore, wall-to-wall, standing room only. And most, if not, yeah, I think all of you were, oh, Councilmember Danuski wasn't on the council yet, but we listened to hours of public testimony, and we heard an outcry from the community demanding that we do more for pedestrian and bicycle safety. You, as a council, took that to heart, and soon thereafter, you directed us to do some pretty aggressive things. Right away, the city installed a series of improvements that quickly looked at and addressed some pedestrian and bicycle safety issues. Within just a couple of months, we were able to install 11 rectangular rapid-flashing beacons on existing arterial crosswalks. Those were all of our arterial crosswalks in the city at the time. And so we installed those pedestrian-activated beacons throughout the city. We also took pretty quick action and added bike lanes and safe-turning lanes on 61st Avenue. We did what you call road diet. We took it from a four-lane configuration down to a two-lane configuration. That enabled us to add bike lanes on 61st, and it also enabled those turning lane refuge islands on 61st. And it also reduced the length and number of conflict points as pedestrians were crossing. Lo and behold, the world did not come to an end when we put 61st Avenue on road diet. That road continues to handle traffic. The, some predicted long backups, and we're just not seeing those. And I have coworkers that drive that road every, pretty much every day into work, and they're just not seeing those backups that some predicted. And then, of course, we've taken up other steps. The RRFBs and the road diet on 61st were immediate steps we took, but we've taken additional steps. And one of the things the city did right away is they, the city council adopted a Target Zero Resolution. The Target Zero Resolution says that by the year 2025, we want zero pedestrian and bicycle fatalities or serious accidents by the year 2025. That's aggressive. That is putting a big statement out there. To achieve a Target Zero goal like that, you have to be aggressive, and you have to address pedestrian and bicycle and multimodal safety citywide. You can't just make a few token efforts and call it good. And so we, as city staff, took your direction seriously. You made pedestrian and bicycle safety your number-one goal, and you have every year ever since, and we've been working pretty aggressively towards that end. One of the things you did in 2014 is you created a pedestrian and bicycle safety ad hoc advisory committee. You had a group of citizens, and it was staffed by Chris Overleas here, and they met over a series of months, and they came up with a list of recommendations. Many of the recommendations we have implemented. One of the recommendations that they had was, get into the neighborhoods. Don't just look at arterials, but we want you to have a neighborhood safety program. And so along those lines, we looked into it a little further, and with your direction and resources you gave us, we created what we call a Neighborhood Transportation Plan Program, where we went into all the neighborhoods. And Brett Shock, who was pretty newly hired at the time, went to work pretty quickly on going into those neighborhoods. And he divided the city up into 15 neighborhoods and gave them all colors and numbers and, and am I taking your, am I stealing your thunder? Okay, I better stop here pretty soon. But he, with a specific budget that he had, he went through many, many neighborhood meetings, and Brett will talk to you about the NTPP program and what it's produced, and we'll talk about the three latest projects that have been produced that have garnered a little bit of controversy. But so far to date, Brett has installed, and this is just in about a year's time, a little over a year's time, Brett has installed, with the input of the neighborhoods, he's installed over 80 projects in just a little over a year's time. This NTPP program is what I call citizen-driven. Unlike a lot of other programs, and unlike the one that was prior to this, this is proactive, and it asks the citizens what they want, and it takes a very, what I call, yes orientation. Try to say yes to our citizens as much as possible, and say yes to what they're asking for when it comes to pedestrian and bicycle safety. So he's installed just over 80 projects. I think about 83 or 84 projects. We've got several more planned after this, and several of those we want to talk to you about as well tonight. So in particular, we want to talk to you about 84th and Simons and that intersection, what's happened there, talk to you about the chicanes on 75th and 67th, and then talk to you about the proposed traffic circles that are in the northwest part of the city. So with that, I'll turn it over to Brett, and he'll give you a little more background on the Neighborhood Transportation Plan Program.
All right. Thank you, Rob. So my name is Brett Shock, here to present the review of the Neighborhood Transportation Plan Program and projects. So a little agenda. I'll go over the plan program itself, some of which you heard from Rob, but I'll reinforce a few things. And then we'll discuss the 84th Avenue and Simons intersection, the 75th and 67th Avenue chicanes, and then the upcoming proposed traffic circles. We'll have a public comment period after each of the last three sections there, and then look for some council feedback on the path forward.
Yeah, we sort of had a discussion amongst some of us here, and we kind of want to deal with them one at a time.
Yeah.
Great.
All right, as Rob mentioned, the program was developed in response to City Council Goal Number One and the Target Zero Program. It was recommended as part of the 14 recommendations by the Pedestrian and Bicycle Ad Hoc Committee in 2014. All of those 14 have been implemented since then. The budget for the program in the 2015-16 biennium was $350,000. 110 of that was carried forward into this biennium to cover some projects that hadn't been completed yet. So the entire city was divided into 15 neighborhoods based on geography. The neighborhood budgets were determined based on the proportion of total households, so the remaining money, after some money was taken out for advertising meetings and things like that, the remaining money was divided up among the neighborhoods. The budgets ranged from $6,000 for the smallest neighborhood to a little over $47,000 for the largest neighborhood, and that was for all of the projects that were going to be proposed in that neighborhood. A few neighborhoods did not participate in the program. We didn't get more than one or two people coming out to those meetings, so those budgets were rolled into the other neighborhoods on the same proportional basis. So this is a little smaller than I had hoped it would be, but this is a map of all the neighborhoods, so you can see they're kind of divided fairly evenly north and south. I think there's eight north of the river and seven south of the river, and they all have names and directions. So for each of the meetings, an invitation postcard was sent to every address in the city, and then the city also put out a lot of information on newsletters, social media, electronic publications, and various other avenues. Each meeting, or each neighborhood's second meeting was advertised by a yard sign. Each meeting, or each neighborhood's second meeting was advertised by a yard sign placed within those neighborhoods as well. Each neighborhood was offered the opportunity for a minimum of two meetings. If there was no participation by that time, the third meeting was not held. We had a total of 145 participants among all the neighborhoods, and for each meeting, you can see a photo here, maps of each neighborhood were laid out, and participants were given a marker and just asked, "Please, you know, write your concerns right on the map." And then, we used some dot stickers to identify the higher-priority projects and concerns within that area.
And if you look at the 145 participants, when you're doing it neighborhood by neighborhood, the turnout seemed small. It's an average of about 10 people per neighborhood, but two neighborhoods had zero participation. Is that right?
Three, actually.
Oh, three of them did. And some neighborhoods only had two or three people showing up, and so during the process, the turnout seemed small, but if you add it all together, if you put 145 people in one room at one time, it's actually pretty decent participation.
Yeah, in terms of households, it was just over 2% of the invited households participated in the program. So for each neighborhood, the maps were consolidated. Each of the comments were identified, and then the bubbles you see here, I know they're too small to read, but those indicate places where projects were implemented. Everything from signing, striping, vegetation trimming, to larger-scale projects. So a total of 90 projects were proposed, and as Rob mentioned, the implementation has been taking place over about 16 months. We were very proactive with our changes. We tried to say yes unless there was an engineering reason that, you know, a project didn't make sense. For any projects that had a larger change to traffic operations, we did send out additional outreach. The postcards you see here, or occasionally, there were door hangers or some door-to-door outreach performed prior to the implementation. So just a sample of some of the improvements. These are some of the pedestrian improvements. Added a wider edge stripe, some raised markers, and some pedestrian symbols on 153rd Place along a popular walking route to Arrowhead Elementary. Did a lot of roadway striping, especially with these on-pavement stencils. This is at 169th Street and 74th Avenue around a pretty sharp curve. A lot of signage changes. This is a curve warning sign with an advisory speed on 151st Street near Arrowhead Elementary. Roadway lighting was something that was not anticipated at the beginning of the program, but became a very popular aspect, is to increase the amount of lighting on some popular walking routes. You can see the before and after here on 182nd Street. And all the lighting that was put in is the new LED lighting, so it's brighter, it's more focused, but at the same time, it's actually a lower energy cost to the city. This is another location on Arrowhead Drive. You can see the before, there's barely any light, and then the after is a lot brighter. And at the very end of Arrowhead Drive, we actually had a nice project that just finished up last week to widen the pavement and provide a lot more pedestrian space. We did do some traffic calming. This is on 81st Avenue. These are some portable speed feedback signs that were acquired through the program, and these are actually kind of being rotated throughout the city to provide some traffic calming with the speed feedback. We did install one permanent sign as well. And then, there was a speed cushion put in on 82nd Avenue, kind of out on the east side of the city, near Bothell, so this is just south of Northeast 187th Way. And then, there were a number of the RRFB crosswalks that were installed as part of the program. We did not do improvements on arterial roadways through the NTPP, but as we had residential roadways coming up to arterials, we were doing the RRFB crosswalks. So this is one at 190th Street and 68th Avenue, which was obviously well-received by the community. We had the little marquee there thanking us. So just a note about the crosswalks. As Rob mentioned, there were 11 of them that were installed in 2014. There were an additional five RRFBs installed through the NTPP. Four of those were new-location crosswalks that were striped. One was enhancement of an existing crosswalk at Morland's Elementary. And then, we've had two other RRFBs installed through other projects, one near the back entrance to Swamp Creek Park and one at Safeway, and we now have a total of 18 RRFB arterial crosswalks citywide since 2014. So a summary of the program. 95% of the projects have been completed of those 90 that were proposed. We're still making some adjustments to the completed projects, especially the ones we'll be talking about coming up here, and we're monitoring the performance of the existing projects that have been completed.
The project, or the picture you see there on your screen was just completed last Friday, and that's the curve at Arrowhead Drive. The picture was taken so recently that the, that new extruded curb, the curb that you see there hasn't been painted white yet, but that takes the pedestrian walkway from prior 18 inches wide to about seven feet wide to the curb and about 10 feet wide to the stripe. So a big increase in pedestrian space around that curve, and also pedestrian visibility. I went out and talked to the contractor on Friday about this project and just checked in with him, and he told me that the neighbors are coming up to him and, in his words, "doing cartwheels." So it's good to see that we're getting some positive feedback from that.
All right. So the remaining projects, the last 5%, the intersection control in the yellow north neighborhood, as Rob mentioned earlier, the traffic circles, we'll talk about that, and a crosswalk shortening that was requested at 182nd and 73rd that's going to be incorporated into the 2017 overlay work happening on 182nd Street. And then, we're hoping to do a participant survey once we're done, just to see satisfaction with those that participated in the program and the projects that have been implemented. So we're going to shift gears now and talk about specifically the 84th Avenue and Simons Road intersection and the pedestrian safety improvements. So the concerns that were identified through the NTPP by this neighborhood, it was the Gray South neighborhood, was mostly pedestrian safety. This was the longest pedestrian crossing in Kenmore at 120 feet. That's actually longer than any of the crossings of 522. There was no marked crosswalk across 84th or Simons in this area. There were some significant sight-distance concerns, especially for the eastbound-to-southbound right turn movement. You can kind of see the hedge. I don't know if I have a mouse here. No, don't have a mouse. Okay, so the hedge on the southwest side really blocked the view of vehicles to see pedestrians on that sidewalk there. And then, the previous intersection was a pretty severe skew, and skewed intersection is not ideal. It's not something that's recommended by current engineering practice. So vehicles could legally take this turn at 35 miles an hour comfortably, especially the right turn in both directions, so there was a lot of fairly high speeds coming through this intersection, and there'd been a history of complaints even prior to the NTPP. So the proposed project was to slow vehicle turning movements and to reduce the amount of conflict area between vehicles and pedestrians, and as a side benefit, cyclists that were along Simons Road crossing 84th Avenue. Proposed to eliminate the right turn lane from Simons to 84th Avenue southbound. Realign both legs of the intersection at 90 degrees, which required spreading them out as far as possible to reduce the amount of conflict from vehicles turning towards each other. The turn radius was reduced to a standard 35-foot radius for an arterial-to-artorial intersection. The pedestrian crossing distance, because of these changes to the alignment and the radius, was reduced by 2/3, from 120 feet down to 40 feet. So this adds 80 feet of bicycle lane in either direction, in addition to the shortening of the pedestrian crosswalk across 84th Avenue. And then, we also provided a pedestrian buffer, which, as I'm sure you're aware, is the planters. So this was the layout that was shown to the Neighborhood Transportation Plan participants in January 2016, described, as I just did to you, with the planters and the striping. You can kind of see the planter boxes there laid out along that blue line. There was some agency coordination, reached out to the school district and discussed the impacts that this might have to their bus routes. And then, fire truck turning templates were checked in engineering software to make sure that they'd be able to navigate this turn. So after implementation of the project, about a month ago, we did receive a lot of feedback. This is just kind of a summary of comments that had one or more of these different characteristics. A little over half of the comments were concerned with the restricted speed and the safety of that restricted speed for turns from Simons Road, the right turns in either direction to 84th Avenue, and the elimination of the right turn lane. About 1/3 of the feedback had concerns regarding the turning for large vehicles, school buses and fire trucks, and then aesthetics were a concern for about 1/3 of the respondents. A little over 10% had a request for a signal instead of the improvements that were made or didn't feel that there was an existing problem at the intersection. So in response to the community feedback, we did make some adjustments. The planters were thinned out and re-spaced so that we still had enough of a protection for pedestrians, but visually, there weren't as many out there. The planters were also moved back slightly from the radius to increase motorist comfort and to increase comfort for the larger vehicles, school buses and fire trucks. Crosswalks were recently added to 84th Avenue, which also moved the stop bar back for vehicles, again, to accommodate the larger vehicles making those turns. Despite these adjustments, we retain the traffic calming effect. Vehicles cannot make that turn as fast as they used to, and pedestrian protections are still in place. We still have the greatly reduced crossing distance and the extra 80 feet of bike lane in either direction. So I wanted to show you a couple of alternatives to the planters. We've developed this concept, which would remove the planters and place a six-inch extruded curb, similar to what you saw in the picture of the Arrowhead Curve. That would be right behind the existing edge stripe, basically along the front of where the planters are now. For some additional pedestrian protection, we would paint the bike lane green through the throat of the intersection, just to reinforce to vehicles that they do not belong in that space. That would give about 10 feet of separation between the edge of the travel lane and the extruded curb for pedestrians that are crossing behind that curb. As a larger-expense improvement to this intersection, we could do a capital project alternative, which would, again, remove the planters. We would use curbing along the existing fog lines to designate a landscaped area. Sidewalk would pass through this for pedestrians, connecting to the crosswalk of 84th on both sides. We'd have some limited-height plantings on the road-facing side so that we don't have sight-distance impacts, and then on the backside, some more extensive landscaping.
And if I could just jump in here. So we are looking at two alternatives to the planters, and I am recommending that you take a close look at these. Why are we looking at these alternatives? Well, when it came to the planters, you know, Brett was working within a limited budget. He was trying to make the NTPP dollars go as far as they could, and the planters were there as a low-cost way of achieving the safety result. So when it comes to the safety result, we stand by what the planters are doing, but we're hearing loud and clear from the citizens that the aesthetics just aren't there. And so, we are hearing that loud and clear, and, you know, I get it. I know that we, as a community, we want to be proud of our community, and this is a prominent intersection. This is a front doorstep, or it's a first impression for our community, and they don't want ugly there. They want, if we're going to do something there, they want something that's nice and that looks like it should be there. So because of that, we're recommending that you take a look at a couple of alternatives, mainly for the aesthetics reason. And I think either of these alternatives will improve the aesthetics. The second alternative that's up on your screen will do that the most and be able to be more of a normal-looking improvement that will achieve the desired safety result, but will be more attractive. It'll cost more as well, but given what we've heard from the community and given the prominence of that intersection and the need for community pride and aesthetics, I do recommend that you take a close look at this one.
Just a quick question there on that. Could you go with the painted bike lane and then go later with the curb? I mean, you'll have the curb, then you could go later with the grass and sidewalk?
Yes.
Yeah, you could go with the first alternative. If you go back a couple slides, as a kind of a speedy alternative, this is something we could get done in the next few weeks. And then, longer-term, you could appropriate money for the second alternative.
Can you go back to the second? The next one, please. I just wanted to add, whatever we might do here won't look like that. We'll have utilities that we need to contend with, and we'll also have, you know, it's on a grade both ways. It's going downhill on a side slope, so we'll have to spend a good amount of time looking at stormwater and how this area will drain.
Yeah, look at the word "draft" up there on the screen. This is, like Chris said, this is not exactly what it's going to look like. If you direct us to pursue this, we will come back in the near future with a concept that's more representative of what it will look like.
So you're not looking for 100% direction tonight?
On this particular item, we are looking for direction. You could tell us to keep the planters as-is. You may want to get rid of the rocks and plant flowers in them, and then give us the resources to maintain them. That's option one. Option two is to go with the extruded curb and the green bike lane paint. And the third option is to do a capital project. I'm actually recommending that you go with a combination of two and three. So if you could go back to the extruded curb, I'm recommending that we get this project done quickly, where we remove the planters quickly and put in this extruded curb quickly, and then, in the meantime, go ahead and work towards a capital project to do the landscaping and the sidewalk extension in the next option. So I'm actually kind of recommending to do Phase One, extruded curb, right now, get rid of the planters, and then Phase Two is what you would see on the screen. So Mayor, at this time, I recommend that you allow for some public input, and then you, as a council, could discuss and give us direction.
Right. So we'll open this up for public comment on this one, and if you want to come forward, that would be fine.
Wendy Reynolds?
Yep. And just state your name again for the record.
My name's Wendy. I drive this intersection five, six times a day.
Can I have your last name?
Oh, sorry, Reynolds.
There you go. This is for the record.
Can you go back where we can see the intersection, please? With the bike lane, with the green bike lane. Okay. So with the planters or the curb, whatever you put there, you have moved me down grade on the hill. So I cannot see, I live north of Simons Road, so this is my side of the street. When I come up and I need to turn onto Simons Road, I have to go into the bike lane so I can see not the direction of the planters, the other way. There's that utility pole there with a sign that says, "Limited sight, slow down." I can't see that direction. So you've got to move us back up the hill a little bit. You've got to make the turn wider. Everybody is in that bike lane. You cannot make the turn. And then, they put in a crosswalk and they moved the stop line back so far, you can't even see Simons, where the stop line is now.
So just to be clear, you're talking about turning left off of 84th?
Either way.
Down toward 68.
Either way.
You're probably seeing the traffic coming from up at the high school.
I can't, so the planters, at first, when they put the planters in, I was worried I wasn't going to be able to see, I guess that would be east, I was worried I wasn't going to be able to see over them. And that's not a problem. I can see over them just fine. I cannot see west unless I go out into that bike lane. So if I'm coming up and I'm going to turn right, and go, which I rarely do, I don't have to pull into the bike lane, but if I'm going to turn left, I have to pull clear out so I can see if people are coming. Everybody's in that bike lane, and the turns are too tight. I could not even, today, I was coming down Simons, I wanted to turn onto 84th, and I had to wait for the UPS truck to leave. I could not make that turn. They're too tight. I mean, I was stopped. I had to stop and wait for him to go before I could turn. They don't fit. I drive this five, six times a day. I agree the planters are ugly. I agree the planters are ugly, but I'm more concerned about the safety, and this intersection is less safe than it was before. So it's got to be wider, it's got to be wider, or something's got to be done so I can see without having to go into the bike lane. And I almost get rear-ended every time I come home.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds.
Paul Stockland?
Hi there. I was going to comment on the 67 chicane, so could I hold my comments for then?
Yep, absolutely.
Mike Ingham?
Same with me.
Bob Black?
Hey, Bob Black, excuse me, Bob Black, Kenmore, Washington. The picture that you have of right now, obviously, is more aesthetically pleasing, but I tend to agree wholeheartedly with what Wendy says. The way that you have this configured right now, when you're going down the hill, and I actually live down that hill, when you go down that hill, the turn becomes so sharp that if somebody is coming in that direction, you have to stop, which backs up traffic behind you. If that whole thing were moved uphill and a bump out put on the north side coming up, and you move that whole extruded curb south, you'd still gain your little space. You would move the roadway up. You could widen it a bit and make it a lot safer, also make it more gradual of a turn. The one thing that I've noticed is you've put a lot of thought into reconfiguring this side of the road, but you also have the other side of the road that has the exact same problem. You're coming up the hill, and you have to virtually come to almost a standstill to go around the corner. Now, there are people that will disagree with me, but in one of my previous lives, I drove semi-tractor trailer, and you could not navigate that. You could not navigate that with a 32 footer, not that I would really want to. What's happening with this configuration that you have right now, since I live down the hill, you're actually diverting traffic down a street. So now you're moving the problem from here, north. Coming up the hill, you're moving the problem, south. So people are going down to 166 to make the turn because it's a better turn. They're actually going up to 155th and making the turn because it's a better turn. Of course, there's also traffic light at 155th, too. The configuration that you've got right there, again, is more aesthetically pleasing, but here, you've only addressed one side. You have an east and a west side. This side, you're only addressing, obviously, the east side of Simons. I haven't seen anything about the west side of Simons. It was my understanding, and I will go on the record as being corrected if someone so wishes me to be, there really wasn't a huge problem going southbound. Now, granted, people could come up the hill, they could go into the right, yeah, the right turn lane and maintain a given speed, but coming up the hill, first of all, you're going to be going slower. But coming up the hill, you go into the left turn lane, you're out of traffic, you could make the turn, the buses can make the turn, large trucks can make the turn, UPS trucks can make the turn, anything can make that turn. So you could do the same thing on the other side. You need to bring both sides in, moving this traffic toward the center, giving people more sight distance, both up and downhill. On this road right here, if you're coming up the hill and you're stopped there, especially now with the crosswalk, and if you stop behind the crosswalk, you cannot see vehicles coming over the top of Simons until they're on top of you. Now you've got a collision. You know? Granted, this whole situation has become problematic for everybody. The planters are hideous, by any stretch of means the words. The extruded curb is something that's a fairly simple and easy thing to install. Trust me, I have a lot of experience with that type of curb. So my final comment is, the configuration that you have there, while aesthetically more pleasing, is not workable. And it's not workable because if you go down that road, if you go down Simons and turn on 84th like you are right there, and you have a large truck, your whole vehicle is going to shift downhill. That's just gravity. If there's another car on the other side, somebody's got to stop. And you know how particular people are when they come to their cars. They don't want to back up, you don't want to back up, so it becomes a head-button contest. Again, this is prettier, and I like it better because it's prettier, but it's not functional. And again, you've only addressed the east side. I have seen nothing addressed on the west side. Thanks.
Mr. Stock, just to be clear, that car is heading to 68th Street, is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Westbound.
Steve Cops?
I spoke earlier, so I won't repeat a lot of what I said, but I do want to say that...
State your name again, please.
Steve Cops. I think it would make for pretty clunky public policy to change. Now, give them a chance. There are probably tweaks that can be made. Certainly, the aesthetics are solvable. I think these are better aesthetics, but they're not so much better that it makes sense to sort of throw good money after bad here. You guys are stewards of the budget. You need to make prudent financial decisions. You've made an investment here. Stick with it. Stay the course. Make a pay. If you need to make changes to make them more effective to address some of these concerns, do that, but in the context of the investment that you've already made, the aesthetics are totally solvable, I think. And again, these aesthetics aren't so much better that it makes sense to sort of change course right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Karina File?
Hi, I'm Karina File, a citizen and a parent advocate. Just talking about how the teens have moved along, and they've come back and moved into the radius or closer to our street edge. The prior plans look like they have the same radius here in this image. I don't know if they do or not. And I appreciate that the traffic engineer explained that computer software was used for expecting a turn. I think practicing the turn is important, too, as the city has done with emergency vehicle equipment. We can't forget that this is an area that's highly traveled by families and young drivers, new drivers. And my son came to a coffee with a council meeting a few weeks back and explained that, you know, some of his friends are having a hard time coming up and down around these turns. And it's a little bit hairy of an experience for some families. So when we are looking at this presentation in front of us right now, this slide, I wonder about that turn radius. Is it two, is it the original radius? Should it not be brought back inward a bit? And the stopping point and the line of sight is a dangerous situation. If you have children in a crosswalk or an oncoming bicyclist, your car's going to be in that, in that ride zone or in that line of sight, and that creates for a dangerous situation. So I don't know what we can do to create a better line of sight, and I appreciate that the city is addressing the situation. I do like Project Two and Project Three of growing together as long as we had a better turn radius, so that it is safer. And I think that's about it. The other side of the street needs to be addressed as well. Aesthetically, it would be nice to have something matching on the other side. I do have one question about this green paint strip. Throughout our city, we have other areas that have just the template that's painted on the sidewalk. So if we're going to do a green strip here, are we going to be doing it elsewhere? Or would it be more cost-effective to put a template down? Just thinking fiscally. Thank you.
No one else has signed up to speak?
Is there anyone else who would like to address the council? Is there anyone else that would like to address the council? Okay, at this point, can we have the council ask questions or make comments at this time on this topic, this intersection?
Yeah, Your Honor, if I could just add one clarification. We most certainly are looking at both legs of this intersection, not just the leg you see there.
That was my understanding.
The opposite side would also see a similar treatment. Given that the configurations of the two legs are so similar, we just showed the one, but want to make it clear that we're going to be addressing both legs of that intersection.
Okay. Councilmember Sperry?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Brett, back with the first thing that you showed us, the feedback, could you go back to that slide? Because the very top line, where it says restricted speed, safety of turns from Simons Road, and that obviously was by far the largest number. Hearing some more of the examples here, do you have any more you could help us understand what you are thinking the concerns might be? Is it people getting stuck out in the road in the middle of the Simons, or...?
It was similar to some of the concerns you've heard, that because of the radius, people required to slow down quite far on Simons to make the turn, especially for the southbound side, that there used to be a right turn lane. Vehicles used to be able to get out of the Simons Road traffic and then make the right turn. So there was concerns from the safety aspect of, you know, previously, Simons Road had pretty well free-flowing traffic, even when there were right turns onto 84th. And now, vehicles have to slow down to make those turns. And there were also some dissatisfaction with the traffic calming effect in general of the project.
Councilmember Sperry, if I could maybe help ask a clarifying question to Brett to help with that. How does this turning radius of what you've installed, how is it similar or different than other turning radiuses on Simons, on other streets, from going from Simons to other streets on Simons, or Wannae to Drive, for that matter? How does this new turning radius compare?
It matches the standard turning radius. There are actually some turning radius off of Simons that are only 30 feet. This one's 35 feet. With the changes that we made with the planters, it's effectively actually up to 55 feet from the edge of the travel lane across the bike lane and to the nearest planter. So it's a pretty wide radius, especially compared to the other intersections with Simons Road and Wannae to Drive.
So because you've moved the planters back, you've added, you've allowed for what we call oversteer. Is that correct?
Correct. Yeah, and that's most applicable in the left turns rather than the right turns.
So I know that the aesthetics have gotten a lot of attention, and sometimes that's hard to really get an accurate view of, you know, have the adjustments in terms of increasing that radius? Has that, have you had any positives back on that, or has anybody really said much either way?
I haven't had much feedback either way.
Okay.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes, thanks for the update on everything, and I look forward to hearing about the other projects that are coming up later this evening that we're going to discuss. First, I just want to say, I want to thank you for being responsive, and I know you've gotten plenty of feedback. I know you've had positive, I know you've had a lot of negative, and I think as a representative of the community, it's our responsibility to take some of the blame on the funding side of this, because we loaded you up with a heavy project with not a huge budget, and that was done intentionally because we believed, or at least I believed, that we could make a difference in safety improvements. Even though we're still doing many capital-intensive projects all throughout the city, I think we all believe that, you know, there are things we can do that are common-sense projects that don't require a bunch of overengineering and red tape and bureaucracy, and this was set up and designed to take that approach. And so it's important for me to let you know that I'm behind you on this. Doesn't mean it's going to be perfect, doesn't mean it's going to be error-free, and it doesn't mean we can't correct mistakes and improve it as we go forward, but I think it's really important that we, as a city, do not lose sight of the fact that everything doesn't have to be over-engineered, and that we can shoot from the hip occasionally and try to be creative. And so I just wanted to preface my comments with letting you know that, because that's important to me. Now I'll get into a couple of constructive things. I do think the, excuse me, the green paint makes me a little bit nervous because I've already seen it's peeling down by the Burt Gilman Trail at the 61st Crossing. That hasn't been there more than, I can't imagine, it's more than a few months. And so I'm concerned that if we put green paint, the only thing that would look uglier than no green paint would be green paint that's peeling. And so if we're not committed to following up with the maintenance and repainting of it, then that's something I would not like to see us go down that path. And I do think it could look a little odd to put green paint just at this intersection and not anyplace else. So that's my comments on the paint side. On the visibility side, when you're coming up at the turning queue at the crosswalk there, I think that's an important thing that we get right. I know it's important to have that correct visibility, and I know those angles are awful, but what I do hope is that if we're going to do a more of a capital intensive change at that intersection, I don't want us to have to come back a year later and say, you know, it's just, it's not working because the visibility isn't right. So I think it's really important we get that visibility right. I don't know that it's wrong. I just know that I don't want to have to redo this again in another year. And so if we're going to make, if we're going to be committed on the financial end to make other improvements, let's do it right. And then lastly, I definitely am supportive of getting rid of the planters, and I kind of like what our city manager talked about, which is sort of a combination of the two. I do want to make sure that there's green grass showing on that second one. I know it says "draft," but I also know that when something goes out there in the public domain, everybody will see green grass there. So I just want to make sure we set a proper expectation that if there's planters there or plantings, I should say, that that's, whatever that is, that we address that. So I've got a couple more comments, but I'll let the others talk.
Yeah, let me just clarify for the record that it probably won't be green grass. Brett, just put something green there to show that it'll be landscaped. But we did have in writing on there, you know, native plants and plants and things like that, so, yeah, I definitely want to be clear that it probably won't be grass. We'll have a landscape architect look at it and recommend some things. They'll probably recommend some low-maintenance native plants that look good. On the right side there, you might be able to have some vegetation that's a little bit higher because it's not in the sight-distance area. But probably drought-tolerant plants, maybe even some non-natives, like lavender might look good there, so.
Councilmember Danuski, Councilmember Curtis, and Deputy Mayor.
So I also wanted to say thank you. You did a huge amount of work, and 90 projects and a limited budget, and you were able to be creative, so thank you for what you guys did. And thank you for listening to community feedback. So that's important to tweak things when people are expecting something else. I'm in favor of removing the planters. Initially, I would say go for the extruded curb option first, and then into the, maybe the more capital improvement, probably with maybe even a little bit of a gap, so we know we really did get it right before we spend a lot more money. Also, needing some information on if we're spending a lot of money on this, what are we not doing that's already budgeted? So I would need to know that. But I guess what really, so I like the curb idea. I guess what really bothered me, though, was the comments that you have to drive through the crosswalk and into the bike lane to be able to see to turn. So if we could just really look at that again before we do anything more permanent, you know, if people are sneaking into the bike lane to turn and hit a bike, I think we've missed what we're trying to do. So I know you probably are looking at that or have looked at that, but that was a comment that really caught my ear. And as far as green versus not green, I guess I don't have a hard opinion either way, except that there are a lot of white lines on this road, and it can look a little confusing, so at least if we get some bikes... So at least if we get some bike symbols or something on that bike lane area, that would be good.
Councilmember Curtis?
So I have one comment and a series of short questions. So the comment, if my math is right, if we, out of 82 projects completed, we've had major concerns with two of them, so that means we got 80 of them right. And that means we got 97.6% success. I rarely get 97.6% right, so I think you did pretty good. So I'm okay with, you know, we didn't get these two quite right, and we listen to citizens, and we'll change it. So I'm good with that. I'm happy with the 80 that went perfect, and on to the next ones. The questions. First, it relates to cost, and I have two concerns for cost. One is how much it will cost to design and build it, and the second is to maintain it. So do we have any concept of hundreds of thousands that this thing's going to cost?
For the extruded curb alternative, we're probably looking 10,000 to 12,000 for the first installation, and that would include removal of the planters. There would probably be some upkeep on the green paint in the bike lane. The intention is not to do the same treatment that is on the crossings at Burt Gilman. This would just be regular roadway paint. So in that sense, it would need to be renewed through the intersection, because where cars are turning on, it's going to wear faster. So there would be an ongoing maintenance cost with that. The capital project, yeah, it's six figures and up.
Okay.
Can I also help answer that question? Brett said on the extruded curb, it's probably 10,000 to 12,000. I'd like to actually estimate that a little bit higher, because if you're bringing a contractor out onsite just for this, you have mobilization costs, you have traffic control, you have quite a bit of things. In the agenda bill that was uploaded to the agenda on Friday, we said somewhere less than 25,000. I believe we can get it down substantially under 25,000. But until we know the actual cost, I don't want to commit to an exact number right now. And then as far as the capital project alternative, again, I don't want to commit to a number, but to do both sides of the road, and giving all the utilities and all the other things that most people don't think of or know about when you do a capital project, it's probably in the neighborhood of $200,000. So as you can see, you can kind of see why Brett chose the planters, because he could get the work done and get the safety improvements installed without spending $200,000. So Councilmember Danuski asked, well, what projects would get delayed or whatever? What I recommend is you have several funds that came in substantially better than targeted revenues. The real estate excise tax fund came in almost a half a million dollars better than the budget predicted. General Fund came in about $800,000 better than the budget predicted. The Street Fund came in about a quarter million dollars better than the budget predicted. So you wouldn't have to delay or move any current budgeted projects, but you'd probably want to look at it in the context of other projects that you might want to add or fund to your capital improvements before you actually allocate that money. And so we can definitely provide that for you in that larger context.
Kind of the related question, the cost to maintain it. So assuming we go to the second phase, we put in plantings, would we have to put in irrigation to keep those alive?
I'm answering all the questions, and you guys are free to jump in. But we looked at that. We'd want to do drought-resistant plants that wouldn't need a lot of irrigation, but irrigation might make sense, we just don't know yet. Even if you did drought-resistant plants, you would need to have them watered in for the first couple of years to get them established. So with no irrigation, you would need a watering service to come quite frequently in the summer to water those. After that, it's just a matter of keeping them weeded and keeping the bushes trimmed.
So one of the first things we need to do is get out and understand where the utilities are and do our survey. So we need to find out where the water line is, and you have both sides of the road. So water meters are not inexpensive. So we have, like Rob said, we could have a watering service. We actually could have the contractor that builds this, if we go this route. We can actually say they're responsible for plant establishment for two years, which means we can have them weed and water. So we've got a couple of different ways we can get things established.
Okay. I just had a couple other simple questions. And so on this view right here, that pole that there was a concern you had to pull out too far to be able to see right, would we consider moving that pole if necessary? If that's part of the obstruction, the one with the little sign on it? Because we were talking about moving, you know, road, but sometimes the road isn't a problem. You can't see because of something sitting there beside the road like that telephone pole. Would we move that if it was necessary?
If you have a capital project and a pole is in the way of your improvement, you can ask the utility to relocate it. If it's not in the way of something, I don't know if we can make that happen.
Okay. Then on this leg, I think with the, I think there's some topography that affects this, how it works. It's easy to kind of see it as flat. The turning radius should be easy and work, but it sounds like from the truck experience and others I've talked to, the going downhill makes this a little trickier. I assume you just guys engineer all that into it. And then can we go back to the view where we're looking from the top? Okay, that one. So could we move, instead of the road right where it is, could we move it a little bit more central, so there's a little space on each side? Right now, we've got it all off on one side and pretty much no space on the other side. Does that make, does my question make sense?
Yeah, it could be moved a little bit. There might be a concern about, you're shortening the amount of approach you have to make that turn to get back in line with where the road actually is. So it's a balance, but yeah, it could be looked at tweaking it a little bit to the south, I guess.
Yeah, and I'm sure that would all go into your design.
Yeah.
Thanks, thank you.
So what we're talking about is what we call bull bouts, doing bull bouts on both sides of each leg, rather than a bull bout on one side of each leg. And Chris and Brett, is that something that we could look at? Or do you want to stay with the current configuration?
Happy to look at it. We don't have any design work done on the more serious work options, so we're happy to look at all of the feedback and suggestions we've received, kind of tie onto that. With the work we recently did, because we were keeping pedestrians going the path they were before, we didn't do a bunch of ADA improvements, Americans with Disabilities Act. So with the option of extending the sidewalk and a bunch of landscaping, we actually will have to go in and do more ADA work, big picture. So if there's a curb ramp on the opposite side of the street, we'll have to redo that. So that's another one of our cost considerations is upgrading for ADA.
Yeah, so there's lots of things like that that come up that, on the surface, you don't think of. Another one is drainage. You can't just plop a bunch of landscaping and curbing there and not have ramifications on drainage and where the water flows and how it sheets over the middle of the road and things like that. So drainage, utilities, Americans with Disabilities Act, the list goes on, and that's why the cost gets high.
Can I get a clarification on that, if you don't mind? On the ADA stuff? So what will actually trigger that in this, on this intersection?
So we'll be, if we extend, Brett, can you go back to your picture, please? So on this side of the street, there's no ADA ramp. On the other side, so we'll be able to extend the sidewalk, and what you don't see is the ramp down to the asphalt that'll have the truncated domes, the yellow truncated domes. But on the other side of the street, there's curb ramps on each side of the road. So we can extend the sidewalk off the corner on the west side, but then we'll have to, because we're redoing the crossing more significantly, we'll redo the ramp on the other side of the street.
Deputy Mayor, and then Councilmember Herbig.
Thank you. Again, thank you so much for what you've done in the city to improve the safety for pedestrians, cyclists, and really motorists as well. For the audience's benefit, for the public that's watching on TV, I think it's worth emphasizing that we wanted to do something here that was efficient, was cost-effective, yet would have a significant impact on the risk of accidents and bodily harm at these intersections. Brett has gone out to the neighborhoods and found out what their concerns were, and then made efforts from his background to solve those problems that they addressed, in a rather inexpensive and very efficient way. If you realize we've done 80 of these projects in a year, this is unheard of in government. Government usually takes one intersection and studies it for years, and have all these consultants studying it, spending a lot of money on the planning of things, and sometimes things don't ever get done. Now, business, startup businesses, get an idea, and they implement a pilot project, a small trial, inexpensive way of dealing with the endeavor. And if it doesn't work, they can change, they pivot, they go in a different direction. They make, if it fails, okay, it failed, let's do it another way. And that's what Brett has done with this project, is to solve multiple problems, multiple safety problems in our city, in an efficient, inexpensive way. And that way, we can improve the safety of our citizens citywide so much faster, maybe not in a way that sidewalks throughout the city would do, but sidewalks are really expensive, and we're doing them as fast as we can with the dollars that we can acquire. But if we stopped doing everything else as a city and just did sidewalks, maybe we could do sidewalks all over the whole city instead, but we can't. So what you've done here, I really applaud. It's not the typical way that government does things. And here we've seen in these last few projects that maybe we didn't get it quite right, maybe we need to tweak it, maybe we need to pivot it, change it. And not a lot of money's invested in it, and we can do that. And I applaud the way you've addressed this. A couple of other points I'd like to make. Most intersections are right angles. In most cities, the streets are laid out on a right-angle grid. This is a rather acute angle between 84th and Simons Road. And what we've tried to do here is to make it more of a right angle, so that it's similar to other intersections. However, it's a bayonetta intersection. 84th is offset when you make it a right angle. It's offset on Simons Road. So putting a stoplight in there like was originally thought of, and it was in a plan at one time, but unfunded and untested, unevaluated from an engineering standpoint, it was just an idea that the council had when we went over that 20-year plan a number of years ago. But that would turn into a pretty expensive signal at an intersection, that kind of an intersection. Very complicated, it'd probably be two signals, one at each leg of 84th as it entered. It would result in a right angle approach to Simons Road from north and south on 84th. So I see this as achieving a more of a right-angle intersection, which does slow traffic down. Well, one of the goals was slow traffic down for safety, and by golly, it does it. But it's inconvenient for all of those who are coming down Simons and come down 84th to the north, and those who are coming up Simons and going south on 84th. It was a nice, smooth curve. You didn't have to slow down one bit to make that turn. But one of the goals of this was to get people to slow down so it was safer. So that has achieved it. It's uncomfortable for those drivers who are used to going around that curve at 40 miles an hour. You can't do it. And Mr. Black, I appreciate your comments about a truck going downhill. The grade there, you really have to slow down, or your truck is tending to roll downhill on you. So it's a problem. The grassy area, the planted area increases pervious surface, it doesn't decrease it. So I'm not, I'm just questioning how much irrigation or how much drainage you'd need to do. You'd be improving the pervious surface and the drainage through the surface.
Yeah, it's the sheet flow coming from across the road that we've got to deal with.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, and the curb, if we can beef that up. One of the problems with DC curbs like this is people run over them and break them up. And so there's a maintenance cost there. And if this could be beefed up in such a way that would minimize the maintenance expense on just the one on, I think it's on 73rd, the end of that curb that just went in less than a month ago, it's all broken up, or it was at one point. Someplace I saw a new curb, so that's it.
Yeah, there's some things you can do to deal with that, to strengthen extruded curb. You can put what they call dowels in, like rebar-type dowels that strengthen it. I also want to look at maybe shortening it a little more than is even shown there on the plan. Yeah, because it's the ends of those extruded curbs that get beat up pretty bad.
Yeah. Councilmember Herbig?
I want to thank you for the presentation, Brett. You've, just the number of little projects that you sprinkled throughout the city on, you know, what was admittedly a constrained budget. And seeing, it was actually great to see some of these throughout the presentation that we hadn't seen before. The lighting improvements are dramatic. The paint, the little speed cushions, things like that are great to see going around the city and making our roads a little safer. There are RFBs, all of that. And I think you did, you did what we told you to do. You went forth, and you were creative, and you listened to the neighbors, and you tried to make streets safer. I think maybe, and if this is the council's fault, then this is the council's fault, I think maybe we, you know, maybe we should have, maybe we should have said, you know, laid out some parameters around physical constraints that are abutting major arch arrows. I don't know. We didn't do that. You were working within this, and what you came up with to slow people down was creative, and I appreciate the work you put into it. I do want to say, on the green paint that you see here, that's something that I kind of was spitballing at Rob last week. And it wasn't because so much that I was thinking about bicycle lanes needing green paint, although I think that's useful in a lot of places. Here, because the proposal was just a small extruded curb, I thought the green paint would give more of kind of a visual cue to drivers that there's something there, because the extruded curb can be a little invisible to folks. So this, I thought, would give more of a visual barrier to protect the pedestrian area. I think, I think at the end of the day, we need to get those planters out as soon as possible. I think even if it is the right engineering decision, it's getting the wrong emotional response from our folks, and we need to honor that, even if the numbers say that we're right. You know, we owe that to the people of Kenmore. So I would be happy taking those out tomorrow if we could, and moving forward with what we see with the extruded curb alternative as soon as possible. I do want to, I do hope that we take a good, hard look at Ms. Reynolds' comments around her sightlines, especially looking south, where that, not south, north, where that pole is. And I think we need to really work this one through before we do anything permanently there again. And, but thank you for your work. I mean, the 90 other projects have all been really fantastic, and I appreciate that very much. And I know that we'll get this one right. And thank you.
Thank you. So, yeah, I mean, I certainly want to echo everybody else's comments, and thank you for the work that you did, you've done. There's a lot of successful projects out there. And it's a shame that this has gotten the comments, it has, because it's really done what it was intended to do, slow traffic and provide pedestrian safety. I do have a couple of questions. I kind of agree with Councilmember Smith on the paint, the green paint, because it's just another maintenance expense that may be unnecessary. What about those bicycle symbols, you know, that we see? The bicyclist symbols that sort of indicates that's a bike lane, that would certainly set it off and would provide some sort of indication that there's a curb there, too. So in other words, they see the bicycle symbols, and they know that's bicycle lanes, so they don't go into it. Sight distance. I know sight distance is a problem in a number of intersections. The one that you put the stop sign The one that you put the stop sign in there for the traffic calming on 169th Street. The problem is the lines are so far back that you have to get out in this intersection. I do it every day on Seventy-Fifth. I have to get out into Simon's Road and into the bike lane before I can see cars coming up and down Simon's Road, before I know it's safe. Is there anything that you can do with where that line is with the stop sign? And if the pole is causing an issue with the line of sight, can't the pole be moved because it's a safety hazard with line of sight? Do we need a capital project to cause that pole to move if it's a sight issue?
Let us look at it.
Yeah, sure. I'm just asking.
Yeah, let us look at it.
Yeah, we'll look at it for sure.
And with the stop bars. The stop bar is intended to be the first place to stop. It's not always the only place to make that movement. Especially at this intersection, the placement of it further back was... That was intentional for the larger vehicle turning. Vehicles are intended to stop at the stop bar and then evaluate whether they can move into the crosswalk or even nose into the bike lane, because there's good visibility to that bike lane. That would be to the left from the position that Ms. Reynolds was referencing, to be able to see down Simon's Road. And the same thing happens at Seventy-Fifth, at your intersection, Mayor Baker. It's managing all the competing uses. The cyclists are moving at a slower speed. It's more visible to where they are. So being able to nose into that bike lane and then make the turn is sometimes necessary without, you know, completely revamping an entire intersection.
Yeah, that's an important point to make. The stop bar is there to stop the car before they go across the crosswalk or the bike lane. But that doesn't mean they have to suddenly gun it and go as fast as they can once they cross the stop bar. It is acceptable to nose out over the crosswalk and nose out into the bike lane a little bit, assuming the coast is clear for the bike lane. That is an acceptable practice. And I don't think a lot of folks know that or get that. I have to do it coming out of City Hall when I'm turning left out of City Hall on the Sixty-Eight. There's cars parked there, but it's perfectly acceptable for me to nose out into the shoulder of the road and make sure it's clear before I make that full left turn.
And also, I just wanted to remark that there are bike symbols in those bike lanes right now through this intersection, at least one on either side.
Councilmember Curtis.
So I'm inclined just to do step one, the extruded curve, and just get rid of the planter box as fast as possible and just watch it for a little bit. Instead of spending a hundred to $200,000, I'd say just let's take step one and watch.
Councilmember Sperry.
I was literally going to say identical to Councilmember Curtis. So I think that having the next option, the extruded curb, makes sense as a next interim step. I have a hard time spending $200,000 just to do that other little bit. So that's going to be... I'm just not sure of the value of that at this point. But again, you know, I think it's one of those things we need to go. The one thing is, with the extruded curb, though, some way of making sure that there's just not a bunch of white lines, because we certainly don't want to create additional confusion for people. So that's just something. And I was there when Councilmember Herbig came up with the green paint, and I thought it was great. So we'll see.
Deputy Mayor.
Regarding the green paint, it's new to Kenmore, but it's sure not new to Seattle and other cities. They're using the green paint everywhere for bike lanes and putting roads on diets, and then there's green paint on either side. So it's not something that is new to drivers that are driving elsewhere. It may be new to drivers that are just going from home to Safeway and back. So I'd say the green paint really sets it off as something different as a bike lane. And that's the way it's used in other jurisdictions.
So what do you need now?
Yeah, I just need your direction. My recommendation is to remove the planters as fast as possible. We don't want to remove the planters until we still have that, until we have a protection in there to replace the planters. But my recommendation is to go with the extruded curb option as soon as possible, but still come back and look at creating a capital project to do the landscaping. Why? Aesthetics. This is a prominent part of our city. Our citizens expect our city to look nice. They want to be proud of their city, and this is a major arterial, and I think we could do something very attractive here. But again, it's your decision. I'll be happy with whatever you direct us to do.
Deputy Mayor.
Is it also possible to move the center line on where Eighty-Fourth bumps into Simon's, farther to the east on the northbound leg, and farther to the west on the southbound leg? So the lanes are a bit wider. You widen the whole intersection there a little bit, so it would be easier. People aren't turning into a narrow lane.
Yeah, I can look into it.
The radius looks right, but still, if it was wider, it might be more easier to make those turns. I'm just...
Yeah.
I'm not the engineer. But could you look into it?
Yeah. And there'd be considerations with how close together the two approaches become as well, because they are slightly offset. You don't want them to be so close together that traffic turning out of either side would be in conflict.
And my other question about the visibility in that pole that's down there, that pole's always been there, hasn't it? And so it's always been an impediment to visibility for people making a right turn down Simon's, we're coming south on Eighty-Fourth. So that's no different. But that could be improved if it's a problem with visibility.
I would like to reiterate what Brett Chalk just said. One of the reasons why he's moved the configuration on the one leg to the south and the other leg to the north, I always have a problem with north and south on this, because this road actually goes in a northwest-southeast direction. But the reason he's moved those over to the far ends of each leg is what he just said. He wants to separate those offset turns even further, because that was another complaint we were getting, is that it used to be just kind of one blob of an intersection, and cars would kind of turn in. So this makes it more clear, creates a better separation between the two legs. So adjusting those legs closer to each other will defeat one of the purposes of this improvement. I'm not saying we can't do it, but it's something to keep in mind.
Councilmember Herbig.
I just want to reiterate what Deputy Mayor Van Ness just said. I think the... I've taken these, I've gone out there and I've driven all of the different ways. And I do think, especially when you're going, when you're taking a turn onto the north side of Eighty-Fourth, the hill and the way that the hill curves at that point does lead to an uncomfortable... More uncomfortable feeling than I think is necessary, probably, on that turn, because you're both going downhill. And I think your left side is coming up a little bit, too, or something. It's kind of twisting a little bit for a bit there. And I think we need to rejigger that a little bit to make that work a little bit better, because I think it's a little too rollercoastery. So, yeah, it's just kind of, there's something funny about it, so.
So if we decided to go for the sidewalk and the planting and all the other stuff, you'd be coming back to us with that, wouldn't you, as a capital project, because of the expense involved?
Well, you bet.
So can't we start with the extrusion and reconfiguration, the planters gone?
You bet. You can direct us to do that immediately. When I say immediately, I want to set expectations. I'm saying in the next several weeks.
Right.
But yeah, you can direct us to do that immediately, and you could also direct us to come back with a more detailed concept of what a landscaped capital project for this would look like, too. You can direct us to do two things.
But that could even be part of the tip, right?
The, your capital improvement, your six-years capital improvement plan? Yes.
Okay. How do you want to do this? You want to do this voice, or you want a roll call?
Whatever you're comfortable with.
All right. So I think we need, first of all, we need a motion to move forward with removal and the curb.
I'll make a motion that we remove the planters and put in the extruded curb, but not proceed to a full design project.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Move down, second it, okay. So a motion then before us.
Can I ask a question on this? With regards to, when you say, I want to make sure I understand it. When you say not to move forward with the design project, is that to not even have staff work on any other level of capital improvement at that intersection at this time?
That's my intention. I would rather just watch it, because once you start designing, you're spending money.
I understand. And the reason I'm asking is because I want to make sure that whatever they are creating then in this motion, that we don't have to rip it out based on a future capital improvement. So hopefully that that would not come in conflict if later on down the line, we decide to improve it further.
I think it's highly likely that the curb we would put in now, because it's going to have to have brakes in it for drainage, that it will come out when we do a larger capital project. We would salvage what we could, but it is highly likely that an interim extruded curb would have to come out for the bigger project.
Yeah, that's a big downside of what I'm recommending.
Okay, thank you. That's an important part to understand. So we're really committing then to just the first phase?
My intention, the way I made the motion, was very specific. If in two or four or six months, we say, no, this just doesn't work, then the staff will come back, or we will suggest that we move to the next step. But I would like to separate them as two separate individual steps, not automatically move to the next. If it gets four votes. If it doesn't, that's fine, too.
So my understanding is, proceed with the removal and the extruded curb with the understanding that if it doesn't work, they come back to us.
Yeah. But for now, we just observe and see how it does work.
All right. So let's do... All those in favor say aye.
For the record, it's including the green paint, right?
Your choice.
I have no comment on the green paint.
Okay, well, leave it up to staff discretion on that, on the green paint.
Yes, staff discretion. All those in favor say aye.
Wait a minute, can't we have a discussion on the motion?
Sure, we can. I thought we did. Go ahead.
No. Councilmember Smith discussed it.
Okay. Deputy Mayor.
I will be voting against it, because I think just an extruded curb and even green paint in there is, it's going to be just as ugly as the planter boxes. And I think we should plan on making this a nice entrance to the city for all those people that are traveling through Kenmore from the southeast to get onto 522. It needs to be an attractive entrance, and I think we should plan on improving the appearance of it with planting and so on. And so I'll vote against this if it's restricting it only to a curb and maybe green paint.
Anybody else? Councilmember Herbig.
I think I'd rather, I think I'd rather us be planning for the full capital project. We kind of owe it, I think we kind of owe it to the neighborhood to go a little bit above and beyond after the last month. So I'll be voting against the motion also.
And I think this is, my opinion, I think this is the first step that we can certainly increase upon, but I don't necessarily want to go on the hook for $200,000 or more yet. Councilmember Danuski.
So I'll be voting no, kind of similarly here. If we're doing a whole bunch of decisions on capital improvements in different parks and everything in the next year, I'd like to at least know slight ballpark. I don't necessarily need full design or anything, but if we were going to do something like that, I'd want a little more ballpark in my mind as we're making all those other decisions.
All right. This just changed. We're going to do a roll call. Probably the best way to handle this one. So the motion then is to remove the planters and use extruded curb with the understanding if this doesn't work, they're coming back to us. And staff discretion on paint.
Councilmember Danuski?
No.
Councilmember Curtis?
Yes.
Councilmember Sperry?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Van Ness?
No.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbig?
No.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Motion passes four, three. Two more. All right. Next one.
All right. Moving on. The next project that created some controversy is the traffic calming chicanes on Seventy-Fifth and Sixty-seventh avenues. These were two separate streets, but both generally the same approach. So the identified concerns through the neighborhood program was the speed of vehicles on residential roadways. In addition, on Seventy-Fifth Avenue, there were some noise concerns. There were some existing rumble strips that were just created by King County using raised markers on the roadway approaching the hill that's about halfway between 155th and 148th on Seventy-Fifth Avenue. So the proposed project in both locations was a traffic calming chicane. This calms vehicle speeds by requiring vehicles to make short-distance turns on the straightaways and break up visually roads that are straight and run themselves to higher speeds. There's less potential for noise than speed bumps from a chicane. Because these were projects that caused a change to traffic operations, as I mentioned before, there was some project outreach. Postcards were sent ahead of the project to properties on each street in near proximity to each project. And then I did some door-to-door outreach for those that would have a chicane bulb directly in front of their property that might affect on-street parking or driveway access. Admittedly, the project outreach was not clear about the final look of the proposed chicanes. Neither was the communication in the final meeting for either neighborhood clear about the final look of those chicanes. So just for reference, this is the postcard distribution area on Seventy-Fifth Avenue. You can see it's just those properties that front the area where the chicanes are. Similarly, on Sixty-seventh, the shaded parcels are the ones that received a notification postcard, and the chicane is on the north part of Sixty-seventh, up near 194th there. So we got some negative feedback once these were implemented. And in response to that, we decided to do a resident survey. We were intending to do a survey of all the program participants, so we kind of used that model and decided to just go back to these same areas that got the postcard notifications and do an online survey. So as I said, same postcard distribution areas. And in addition to that, a door hanger was provided to every address on both of those to make sure everyone was aware of the survey. The deadline for feedback was last Friday, April 21st, so the results were not included in the council agenda bill. But each road was given five approaches to select the favored approach. Either retain the existing chicanes, which are made of, sorry, I shouldn't have mentioned this before, but they're made of a painted arc with raised reflective markers inside of that arc. And then against the shoulder, there is a planter fixed with reflective signs on either end, and then reflectors on the traffic-facing side. So the five approaches that were presented to each street were to retain those existing chicanes, to install a curved and then planted chicane. So it would be installation of a curb, and then inside of that would just be some soil that would be fairly shallow, deep enough for some annuals. To do a stamped concrete chicane, which would involve the same curbing, but doing a stamped concrete on the inside of it, which would not require maintenance. Removing the chicanes and going to a speed cushion approach instead for traffic calming or removing all traffic calming. On Seventy-Fifth Avenue, we got about 58% response rate, 30 out of the 53 households. There was a slight preference for speed cushions as an individual selection of those five. It wasn't a very definitive result, but speed cushions were the preferred approach on Seventy-Fifth Avenue. On Sixty-seventh Avenue, the total response rate was 55%, 12 out of the 22. And there was about an equal preference for speed cushions as an individual selection or the curved and planted chicane as an individual selection. So we are looking for council feedback on your thoughts and preferences on modifications to the traffic calming to address the concerns that were raised on both of these streets. And as with before, I just want to note that any future project costs would require appropriation, as the neighborhood budgets for these areas have already been completely spent. as the neighborhood budgets for these areas have already been completely spent on various projects.
And Brett, can you, can you talk about the cost of speed humps and landscaped chicanes?
Yeah, we, the speed cushion, which was shown previously, that was just installed, cost $7,000. Now, that was for a mobilized contractor. So, for each individual speed cushion, we're probably talking about $10,000 once the mobilization and traffic control is incorporated. Each pair of chicanes, or each pair of bulbs, there's two of those on 75th and one pair on 67th, would probably be in the neighborhood of 15 to 20 each if it was the curbed and stamped concrete, probably in the 10 to 15 range if it was the curbed and landscaped.
Citizen comment?
Wendy Reynolds? Paul? Paul Bo Stockland?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Bo Stockland. I live up on 66th. I want to echo some of the previous comments. I'm here in the midst of a lot of constructive feedback this evening. There are some strong feelings, but I really do appreciate the, the work and the creativity that you've done, your commitment to traffic safety, pedestrian safety. I, I'm, I would like to comment on the chicane on 67th. I am a pedestrian. I happen to walk my six-year-old daughter to and from the bus stop on 68th five days a week, twice a day. So, we walk on, around, through the chicane twice daily. I have three specific comments on that. The aesthetics, the order and predictability, and the overall effectiveness of it. Number one, the aesthetics of the planters, as have already been discussed tonight, leave a little bit to be desired. If we could even fill them with dirt, you know, we in the neighborhood could plant some plants in there, we would do our part to keep up with both of them, so. And, any, any improvement there would be nice. On the order and predictability side, I occasionally see cars coming from both directions, and there seems to be a lot of uncertainty on who really is going to yield through the chicane. I see that as a safety issue if, if neither one decides to. And also, the, the overall effectiveness with just the painted white lines on there, it's, it's like mime jail. It just doesn't work for the vast majority of people out there. People are still doing like 35 right through, so from traffic calming and safety-wise, it's, it's simply not effective. As far as the, the alternatives proposed, I would be in favor of either number two or number four, the stamped chicanes or the speed humps. I think both of those would achieve the, the safety objectives. I also did want to ask for the, or say, the crosswalks have been great, really like them, the bus stop there with the kids getting on and off, that's huge. Would be nice to get some flags there, but other than that, excellent work, couple of constructive points, but thank you for listening to Citizens for this, and thank you for making the, the time to listen to public comment.
Thank you.
Can I ask a follow-up question? Did you, did you vote on the online survey?
I did.
Okay. I was just wondering if you could be one of the, it could be the tie-breaking vote here, because, because the, it's a tie right now in that neighborhood, so.
All right, all right.
E- either one would be good.
Thank you.
Mike Ingham?
My name is Mike Ingham. I've lived in Kenmore for 35 years on 67th. I've had more conversations with speeders than anybody in the world. Now, I haven't had conversations with police, because they don't police 67th. It's a quarter-mile drag strip. The chicane, when it was presented to us, the neighborhood, had a picture that had plants growing in it, and it was a structure like they have in the slums. What I have right down from my house, I could have had my nine-year-old granddaughter do. It's a white semicircle. It's got reflectors, so we probably couldn't have put the reflectors in, and that ugly container of rocks. Now, if I could move the rocks out more into the middle of the road, that might slow people down. But those two ugly things had nothing, it's not what we, it's not what we saw. Everything we saw had it filled in, and it was a buffer. I was in favor of speed bumps, or humps, or whatever you call them, but it was suggested we try the chicanes. I was at the meeting. I've talked to him on the phone. The chicane that's there, I got out of the hospital last month, came home, and my neighbor said, "Mike, you see what you got?" I said, "Oh, no, no, that's just the beginning of it. They're going to come out and finish it." And then, we got the notification of this. To me, it just feels like, yes, I've seen a lot of improvements, and I love the light down there where our kids get on the school bus. We've got 10 kids that live on my street, not even counting Bo's around the corner. We've got 10 kids under the age of 12 that live there. And I can guarantee you, every day, and it's not a lot of traffic that does it, but we have a lot of speeders on there, because it is, it's straight. And I think the speed bumps would be the best, but if we're going to put a chicane in, put a chicane in that's going to force people to slow down. As it is now, all they do is drive over it. I was going to bring pictures, but there's no reason for them to move. The, the rocks are way over on the side, so they're not going to run into them. And I have a, I have a nine-year-old granddaughter. God help the person that nips her. I mean, this is crazy. And I was really hoping that we were going to get something that would help, because I have been trying for a long time to get something up there to slow that traffic down. So, I was disappointed. It, I know he's done a lot of good work, but I feel like my street was kind of bait and switch. I mean, we didn't get what we had seen. All the cards that came out had this big obstacle that would force people to slow down. What we've got there is, you know, I'd like the rocks to go away, they're ugly, they do nothing. And if, if the city of Kenmore really is concerned about that street, which I thought they were, I'd like you guys to decide how you're going to do it, and then do it, and do what you say you're going to do, because that street has a speeding problem. And part of the problem is, and this is where I debate it, but, you know, I'm very emotional about this, and right now, I'm going through some personal stuff, so I'm, I'm a little more emotional than I usually am. But I'm a retired social worker. I know behavior of people. You give people a straight road, and everybody knows there's no enforcement, and they're going to use it. I see mothers with their kids in the back hauling tail down our street, because they're in a hurry to get to homeschool or wherever. So, I, I'm not trying to dog him, because he had a big job to do. But on our street, you know, we've got a good neighborhood, people would just like something that's real, and something that'll work. I personally think two speed bumps on that road will slow people down.
Mr. Ingham?
Like I say, there are 10 kids below the age of 12 that live on that street.
Can I ask you, you live on that section, correct?
I live right in the middle.
Did you vote on the online survey?
Yes, I did.
Okay. Still looking for that tie-breaking vote.
Well, I think what, I think if I remember right, it was one or the other, but if, if we're going to do something, I think, from what I've heard from my neighbors, is they want something that's going to be effective. And like Bo's, you know, Bo, the school bus picks kids up down on 68, so a lot of the people walk down. There's three or four kids that sometimes walk down from the street up above. And, and so, anyway, I'm sorry if I'm too emotional about this, but it, it just, I couldn't believe it when, when I saw what it was, and, and I said, "Oh, no, that's just the beginning of it. They're going to be out to finish it." And it, you know, then it turns out, we got this thing about the survey. How do you like your, whatever? So, I just wanted to press for something that will actually lessen the possibility that somebody can be hit by somebody who's just in a hurry. They're not mean people, they're just in a hurry, and it's not their street. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Bob Black?
Again, Bob Black, Kimball, Washington. I would like to just to make a couple of comments about 75th. Well, no, I do not live on there, so I can't be the tiebreaker, but I do drive that road frequently. And what you have done now is you've actually caused people to move to the center of the road. There is a hill there, and you cannot see the other side. So, now you've got a car coming up in the center lane, one direction, you've got a car coming up the center in the other direction, what do you got? You've got head-on collision, or at least a near miss. And that actually happened to me today. So, it's, it's not a far-fetched item. It's not a far-fetched thought. Speed humps are extremely effective. Speed bumps, speed humps, whatever you would like to call them, speed humps basically allow the, as you know, the large emergency vehicles to go over more smoothly if they're placed correctly. I would like to interject one other comment, that on 84th and Simons, you need to bulb out both sides, not just one side. And yeah, you may be moving the line of traffic together, but what do you have? You have a four-way stop. You have two and two. You have the same deal. So, offsetting them, I'm having a little trouble buying into that. But again, back to 75th, which is the topic here, you really need to put in some speed humps, because they do slow things down. Go to Kirkland. Go to 85th between 35th and 30th in Seattle. You will see a chicane, and you will see what kind of problems it creates. Go to Kirkland, they have a lot of speed bumps over there, and I'll tell you, they're damned effective. And I mean damned effective. Excuse my language, but it's the way it is. You know, and as a person who is, I log a lot of miles on the road, hopefully not anymore in 12 days, I'm going to retire, so that's going to be a good thing for me, because then I'll be less of a pain in the butt to people. But putting all this time on the road and seeing what is out there and seeing what the problems are, we're talking firsthand experience. Come ride with me for a while, I'll show you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Black.
Karina File?
Hi, I'm Karina File, and I travel through 67th a couple times a month, and so my experience is visiting friends. And I'm very aware it's a, a very family-friendly neighborhood, and there are families who have their signs out there for their kids, just to keep them safer when they have company and have younger children. When you look at the picture online of how that looks, and if you were going to show it to a child, it's kind of the example of what doesn't belong circle at picture. That's, and it has the appearance of that when you're driving through it and you're thinking on it reflectively. It's the, the planters, just, it looks like just somebody dropped them off there and, and drew a half-circle. So, while the intent was good, the execution maybe didn't come out the best. I do recommend speed cushions in that area, however, I'd recommend speed bumps in the area. Speed cushions, I don't know that it'd be very effective on 67th. Speed bumps, they're rather annoying, and they do tend to slow people down when you're driving, and you're hitting a speed bump. For those who are going a little bit too fast, you know right away. On 75th, I've only had to drive through there once, and it is just a little awkward. So, again, on that street, if one was traveling down, down the hill, I would say that a speed bumps would be better versus a, a speed cushion. Speed cushions seem better on long, flat surfaces versus on hills. And even though I'm, I'm not recommending a speed cushion for 67th, it's just the, the way the road lays. So, I have been a long proponent of safe routes throughout our community, and sidewalks, and crosswalks, and sidewalks I've seen, and I couldn't be more thankful to the city for stepping up and working hard to improve our city and make it safer. I think this is just one of those pieces in Kenmore's history that we learned from, and I will be grateful to see a happy change that's more aesthetically pleasing. Thank you.
No one else has signed up to speak?
Anybody else wishing to, to speak? All right, questions? Counsel? Councilmember Danuski, Deputy Mayor?
Hi. For the chicanes, I walk my dog. 67th is on my dog-walking loop, and yeah, currently, they're not functioning as intended, and watched 17 people, I think, in the first couple of days go through, and 17 just drove right over the white lines, so. I, I think I'm ready for those planters to go away pretty soon. I, I personally like the speed humps. I, I think, at least on 67th, it's a very low-traffic road, and even with the chicane, I have a feeling that cars will maybe just go fast and just zip kind of through there, so I'm in camp speed humps for the chicanes.
Deputy Mayor?
Thanks. For eight or 10 years, I lived on the west side or the east side of 64th, and since then, for the last 18, I've lived on the west side of 64th. And before my knees gave out, I used to walk, and I remember one Thanksgiving morning, I was up and out walking, and I got up to 64th, and I heard this roar, and it was coming from the south, and it was this Camaro that was just had it floored roaring up 64th. Subsequent to that, maybe within a year or two, three, maybe four, speed bumps went in on 64th. Nobody roars up 64th anymore. They're very effective at slowing traffic down. And I don't know that, you know, there are a lot of cars with really good suspensions, and these speed cushions, I don't know, just sort of a minor annoyance to the suspension system on, on a lot of, a lot of cars. I'm thinking the speed bumps, if you really need to slow it down, you need to make it painful to go over them at any increased speed. That said, to the people who live there, that's pretty noisy, and the residents on either side of those, they don't like them. But if you need a tiebreaker, who did you poll? Just the people on 67th? Not the, because I have a friend who lives just around the corner, two houses up 191st at the end of that, and he gave me an earful about these ugly planters, and he wanted speed bumps there. So, he could be a, a vote for the speed bumps, if, if you want to extend your polling area.
Councilmember Herbig?
I'm going to join Councilmember Danuski on Team Speed Hump, I think, I, I, I think that's, that's where we need to go with both of these. That's all I got, but I, I, I think speed humps are where we need to go.
Councilwoman Smith?
Well, since I am probably the only one on the council that drives over speed bumps multiple times a day to get to my house, I will say they work. And I hate them, but they work, they're effective, and I, I'm absolutely in favor of that, and I'd take that over the chicanes.
Councilwoman Sperry?
Thank you. I guess they're called speed pillows now? That's true? Okay. Yeah, that would be my, my vote on this. I think that's the way to go.
Can I say something? The, the road, the streets we're talking about are 25 mile-an-hour roads, correct? These speed cushions we're talking about are rated at how fast?
20 miles an hour.
20 mph. So, the idea is that if you're going to go over the speed cushion without catching air or whatever, you, you need to be doing no more than about 20 miles an hour when you're going over it.
You think that'll be a problem?
Can I ask you a question? So, if you have a wide view, so if you're driving a Yukon or something, can you go over the speed cushions without, because I- speed cushions without, because I know I've driven in my vehicle where, it's some in Seattle, where you barely even notice you're going over them, if you hit them just right.
The wheelbase on the fire truck is wider than any production passenger vehicle.
So, are they using a different standard in some of the other municipalities then, where it's, or maybe it's even Kirkland where I'm driving, I mean, I drive over them all the time, and you concentrate, because whenever I hit one, I concentrate just to go so I have the least impact possible, and I'm amazed sometimes how little you can even feel the bump. And, so, that's the reason I would ask that question, is that if that is wide enough that any standard vehicle, though, would have the full effect of a speed cushion?
The usual design would be to space those wheels so that they're, only the fire truck can get in those wheel wells, so you have to have at least one wheel on the bump.
Councilmember Smith, but I think you're just talking about driving over the bump, right? Or are you talking about straddling it so you can avoid the bump?
Straddling?
Oh.
You know, there's no oncoming traffic coming, and you just hit it, you try to, you know, it's like trying to get your wheels into the car wash at Brown Bear, you know, you come up and you're so proud when you can hit it right on, and he doesn't have to tell you to move this way or that way, it's the same concept.
So, you know, at five o'clock in the morning, when I'm out driving, Kirkland, those speed humps, I mean, they're there. Some of them, yeah, you can go with one wheel in the groove, right, and the other wheel gets the bump, but some of those humps are steep enough that you slow down, because you don't even want to go over it with two wheels, with two wheels on flat ground, because they're just too much, so. I think they're quite effective, I mean, I see them all over in my escapades early in the morning, so. Let's see, I want to make sure we got everybody. Councilmember Murray?
Thank you, I know it's getting late, so, twenty miles an hour, it's, you're not going to get a bump out of this speed pillow thing, whatever, so what if somebody goes thirty miles an hour? What would their experience be like?
Well, they'll certainly get a jolt out of it.
Well, that's what we want, so.
Yeah.
All right, so, it looks like everybody's sort of favoring speed humps, so.
Does that break the tide?
Do, do.
That's what you're elected to do.
Do we need a motion on that, or is it pretty obvious? Which you, which you want?
To be consistent, I think you should.
Okay, so, Chair will entertain a motion to, for the calming devices on Sixty-seventh and Seventy-Fifth, and elsewhere where necessary.
No, no, no.
Okay, Sixty-seventh and Seventy-Fifth.
So, move, yeah, I'll move for that.
Okay, and second, any further discussion? All those.
That's remove the planters and the chicanes, and go with the speed pillows.
Speed pillows, or whatever we call them.
All right, so, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
Thank you.
All right, the last one.
Okay, so it is nine-thirty, this last one could take twenty minutes, are you good? Or do you want to put it out to another meeting?
Let's get her done.
Okay. All right, Brett, take it away.
I'll try and be efficient. All right, so, traffic calming intersection improvements, these are all up in the, well, got a map. So, this is Sixty-eighth Avenue on the right, Sixty-first on the left, it's the same general area as the Sixty-seventh Avenue, what is now going to be speed bump. So, there's three intersections that, through the neighborhood plan, there were concerns identified about the speeds of vehicles making turns through these intersections, as well as proper yielding of vehicles at these intersections. One of them was specifically asked for to be a traffic circle, and that treatment worked well to address the concerns at the other two. So, the proposed project is a traffic circle, with the cost and right-of-way constraints of the program, the idea is to use a raised center circle, essentially a circular speed bump, and then using paint and raised markers for the splitter islands, and to guide the outside of the traffic circle. So, here's kind of an at-grade rendering of what that would look like. So, around the center island, which is mountable stamped concrete, there would be some reflectors to raise the visibility of that, and then vehicles would be required to yield to those already in the circle. And, in addition to what's shown here, we can paint some arrows in the circle itself to show the circulation direction. This is just a sample of the stamped concrete, this is one of our islands at Hundred-and-eighty-first and Sixty-seventh near the post office, so it'd be similar to this, that you'd have a rolled curb on the outside with the stamped concrete pattern on the inside that we've been using in a number of locations across the city recently. So, just looking at the proposed plan, this is at Sixty-sixth Avenue and Hundred-ninety-fourth, so just north of where the current chicane is on Sixty-seventh Avenue. This is a fairly wide intersection, so right now it's called out as a planted center island, that's mostly due to cost considerations, stamped concrete in that size would drive the cost of this one up. It could go either way, though, there are no larger vehicles that I received any feedback about coming through this intersection, so it can accommodate those vehicles. There's a pedestrian walkway on the north side as well. This is Sixty-second Avenue and Hundred-ninety-sixth Street, again, an area for pedestrians on the northeast side there, that's actually where there's a school bus stop. The island in this one would be fully stamped concrete, so just a mountable center island, as we do have a school bus coming northbound through this intersection. And then this is at Sixty-second and Hundred-ninety-seventh, so just off the left side of this picture is where Sixty-first Avenue is. I received some feedback about a very large trailer that passed through this intersection in addition to the school bus, so this one would require a mountable center island as well, just so that we don't have maintenance issues with any kind of plantings.
Brett, can you go back to the Sixty-sixth circle? Okay, so this is Sixty-sixth, this is very near where the chicanes on Sixty-seventh are. They're, the chicanes on Sixty-seventh are to the right and just one block away, correct?
Yeah, the house you can see there, just off the right side of the picture, it's pretty much right in front of there.
Yeah, so we're really just one block away from the chicane street, just to give you some perspective.
Oh, changing that, okay. Yes. And, just one more thing I want to mention with these two, because these two intersections are very close together, the two circles actually kind of work in tandem to function as kind of a speed bump for the through traffic. So, this one at Hundred-ninety-seventh is right in the lane for southbound traffic, and this one at Hundred-ninety-sixth is right in the lane for northbound traffic. So, anyone that's going through these intersections is affected by the turning maneuver. So, because these affected traffic operations, there was a lot of outreach, postcards were sent ahead to any of the properties in the affected areas, and I did some door-to-door outreach to properties that are directly on each circle. This is the area for Sixty-sixth Avenue that received a postcard, you can see where the circle is there. There were some responses to the postcards with how the project came to be proposed, but I was able to answer those. The people directly on the circle had some concerns with pedestrian space, so the design was tweaked to add those in. But, in general, there was a dislike of this project by those that are immediately adjacent to it, there was some concern with the effects on property values and just the, how necessary the project was considering the traffic volumes coming through that intersection. This is the postcard distribution area for the Sixty-second Avenue circles, you can see how close together they are, and then I did the door-to-door outreach. In general, the adjacent residents were very much in support of both of these, they really liked the idea, especially the fact that it would be the raised stamped concrete circular speed bump. There was some concerns with pedestrian space, and as I mentioned before, there's some large vehicles that go through both of these intersections, so there was just some questions regarding that, and I was able to use some engineering software, again, running those templates through to tell where the turning radius is, to show that those vehicles would be able to track over the center, so they'd have a bump, but they'd be able to navigate the traffic circle. And again, this is just the rendering of Sixty-second and Hundred-ninety-seventh, so you have an idea of what we're proposing. And now we're just looking for your feedback on how we go ahead with this implementation. This is one of the last things through the neighborhood transportation plans, it's in that last five percent. Staff has suggested a possible neighborhood vote for the less-supported traffic circle at Sixty-sixth and Hundred-ninety-fourth, we could do a different kind of intersection treatment there, that would not be as extensive as the traffic circle. Those that were in favor on Sixty-second, we could retain that one, we would certainly post some signage in advance of the project implementation to make sure that those around in the drive-through there are aware of the coming project, and how it came to be.
Comments, we have any citizen comments here?
Beau Stockland?
Hi there, Beau Stockland, again, on Sixty-sixth, referring to the Sixty-sixth Hundred-ninety-fourth one, I like the pedestrian space, that's very good, it does get a lot of pedestrian usage. One concern I might raise is, I think there may occasionally be larger vehicles, like tractor-trailers delivering like full household moves, so it might be nice to have a design that would permit, you know, very slow speed going over that center thing, I don't know, maybe reduce the diameter of the island, but I'd prefer, you know, a smaller raised island type thing. But, I haven't gotten a lot of feedback from the other residents in the area, so perhaps it needs more revisiting, just to see what the overall consensus of the neighborhood is. Thank you.
Mike Ingham?
Well, I live on the street below it, if I can just sit here. I've got friends that live on Sixty-sixth, and the biggest thing that we've been concerned about is when they come down off the hill, they come onto Sixty-sixth, and then that big intersection where they're talking about the roundabout, what a lot of cars do is they don't want to slow down, so there's, they just hit that left turn, and there's been several times that we, you know, you actually have to jump off to the side, because they cut across, and that's what most people are concerned about, and I don't know how big it has to be or anything, but people coming down off the top of the hill, cut across, it would be nice to make them slow down, and then if we're going to actually have a slowdown on our road, that would be great.
That makes a lot of sense, yeah.
Bob Black?
I think I'll pass.
All right, so I saw Councilmember Herbig, and I saw Deputy Mayor, who else? Everybody.
Everybody.
It's a party.
So, Deputy Mayor?
I assume that you've looked at always stops at these intersections, why a traffic circle rather than always stops? Like at Hundred-ninety-sixth and Sixty-second, there's a stop sign at the bottom of Sixty-second coming down the hill, but the other two is just no stop. And the people often buzz through the stop sign at the bottom of Hundred-ninety-sixth, maybe that's why you want the roundabout, you can't buzz through that.
That's why.
That's it, yeah, those two intersections have existing control based on the highest volume legs and the predominant movements through them.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, they're just blowing that stop sign.
Councilmember Denuski?
Okay, so these guys are also in my neighborhood, Sixty-sixth, I'm personally in favor of roundabout, because I'm one of the people walking the dogs who gets almost hit by the swallum cars coming down. I'm not against doing a resident vote, but, yeah, I'm actually in favor of that one, and I like that it's planted. The other ones, I, personally, I thought that Hundred-ninety-seventh, if you just had a stop sign where the yield sign was, you'd solve that problem, that was just a personal opinion, and so I also had the stop sign questions, but I guess you've answered that. I guess I'm worried on the stamped concrete, that we're going to get a lot of feedback, much like the planters, where they're going to see this little piece of stamped concrete, and they're going to think that we just kind of did a, kind of a half job, where, you know, the planted ones are much more obvious. And then I also just had some concerns on if you have to design something so you can drive over it, is there just really not enough room, and maybe we should have done something different? So, maybe if you can answer a couple of those.
Yeah, the larger vehicles, I mean, those are, well, I mean, the school buses every day.
Every day, yeah.
But, it's not the majority of the traffic coming through there, so the majority of the traffic will still be going around the circle. But if those larger vehicles aren't accommodated with the stamped concrete, then we'd end up with a mess we'd be constantly maintaining. The school bus, as I ran, again, it goes back to the template that I can, you know, check where that turning movement will take it, the school bus can make it most of the way around the circle without going up on the curb, but there is a larger truck that, he lives in that neighborhood and he brings it in there, he said at least once a week, if not more, and it would track right over the center of that circle. So, in consideration of that small use, but use of that intersection, that's why the stamped concrete over the vegetated center.
And, how about like the, on Hundred-ninety-seventh, you know, the biggest concern is people are just whipping in and going there, so if they had a stop sign, I don't know if you'd need a traffic circle there at all.
There's an existing yield sign for Hundred-ninety-seventh?
I think people are blind to yield signs.
And, the point of that being there is because the primary movement through that intersection is that right turn, so putting that stop sign there, I mean, unless it's paired with some serious enforcement, it's not necessarily going to change the behavior. And it doesn't address the north-south, there were some concerns, especially when I went door-to-door, there were some concerns about north-south traffic through that intersection.
Okay.
Councilmember Herbig?
I grew up, I learned how to drive in Seattle right after the traffic circles invaded North Seattle, and I think they're relatively easy to adapt to, I think they're very effective at slowing people down, and making people be thoughtful as they're moving around. Moving trucks seem to get in and out of North Seattle okay, the fire department seems to operate just fine, and these are frankly even more navigable than what we're, than what we see, I mean, I frankly would love to see ones with trees in the middle and, you know, have something grow, but these seem like a really common sense solution. My only actual concern with them is the color of the stamped concrete, I think it blends in too much with the surrounding road, and I think there might be some visibility or visual cues missing with just using gray concrete on top of gray asphalt with some, you know, with the curb around it. I think we should look at either like a brick color or just something else that's different to catch driver's eyes as they're coming up on it, because we are going to have people who didn't grow up in North Seattle dealing with all of the traffic circles, who are going to be a little confused, and they made, some visual cues could be helpful, and I think, you know, the, you know, the paint you have there will be helpful, but I think making the traffic circle stand out from the road more would also be a positive step. So, I think this is a common sense solution, it's also more efficient frankly than a four-way stop or a three-way stop at moving vehicles, so I'm a big fan, thank you.
Councilman? Mr. City Manager?
Well, I don't want to jump in front of somebody's turn, but I would like to talk about one thing Councilmember Denuski said, and that's a driver unfamiliarity, or however you say it, sorry, it's late, but if it's a device that drivers haven't seen before, that's when they freak out. And, so how often do you see a traffic circle that's mountable with bricked, you know, stamped concrete? I know of two, but they're rare, one is in Kashmir, Washington, downtown Kashmir, and the other one is in downtown Redmond, right by the Redmond Town Center, those are both mountable. But, you could get a backlash if you put something that's not familiar to drivers, it may be effective, it may make sense from an engineering standpoint, but it's not familiar, you get a backlash. So, that's just one thing I want to point out, so.
Councilmember Curtis?
So, I'm in favor of the two roundabouts on Sixty-second with the stamped surface concrete. The one on Sixty-sixth, I don't have a good sense for what the volume of traffic is, somehow it feels like the volume is so low, is there an easier way, give one the yield and give one a stop, or, I don't know, it just feels like this is overkill for the amount of traffic at that, what I think is at that corner.
So, I think that is, so our recommendation is to put out a vote for that particular one, and give the people two choices. One is the traffic circle as proposed, and the other one is a yield sign or signs. One is the traffic circle as proposed, and the other one is a yield sign or signs. And, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that's the vote that we propose to send out, and we'd send it out by postcard and have people vote online, just like we did with the other ones.
Would we gather any data before we did that to actually measure how many's on each leg to say?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and we would, we would need to do that in order to know where the yield signs need to go.
Okay.
So that's our recommendation. We'd like to get your sense of that.
Councilmember Sperry?
Thank you. Well, I didn't grow up where there are traffic circles, and I've already told my Seattle story, but one time I went to a wedding at University Place, and when I saw that first traffic circle, I was not happy. By the time I went through about 14 of them, it felt like I was quite, I was quite, and I'm looking at the former city, whatever you were at that, you were part of that, I know. But the point of the story is, I mean, it's funny now, but I think that having a series is actually better. Having multiple traffic circles in a pretty small area is going to help people to get used to them. Obviously, we need to do all kinds of things. I mean, signage and YouTube videos, maybe little temporary arrows for people like me that don't understand how to turn left at them and things like that. So I think there is going to be an education thing, but I do think once you go through a couple of them, you get better at it, so. The second piece on the 66th one, I would, if this is going to go out to bid, I would bid for the two and then with the third as an option, depending on the community feedback. And the other thing is, is that perhaps going with the smaller diameter might address some of the concerns of the community, so it's not going to be so, so large and all that, so.
I think the smaller the diameter, the less effective of a device it is.
Mm-hmm.
So we've got to balance that.
Yeah, I'm not the engineer, so I am, you know, I'm not going to dictate on that one, but I do think there is something about having more than one, especially for people to get used to it. The other thing is you've kind of, sort of had speed bump samples or traffic circle samples with the post office one, you know, by having them there, so it's not like it's totally unfamiliar, so that's a good thing.
Councilmember Smith?
I'd generally be in favor of putting the one on, I guess it's on 66th and 194th, I believe, to a neighborhood vote, so I'd be supportive of that. And then I also, I think I'm okay with the mountable center islands. I do have a question on the paint. I know we, you know, you can tint concrete for all kinds of things, and I'm sure, you know, I guess that's kind of a pewter-on-charcoal palette that you've got there now, but what would you use? What kind of, how would you determine a color and what, because that, as cool as that is, it also creates risk. And so that all of a sudden, we did this great improvement, but we put this ugly color on it. So can you tell me how that, is that just a tint in the concrete?
It is. It's a sealant. It's not integral color. It's a sealant, I think, is what we've been using, and I respect and get the dark gray and the contrast, you know. So the circle will have a white line around it, correct, and reflectors?
Mm-hmm.
I've tried to do red coloring before, and I got a salmon pink, so red scares me.
Okay, good. That's what I was afraid of, is that type of thing.
And we chose the dark gray. We've used it by the post office. We've used it on 522, and we've used it behind Safeway on the RRFB, so it is kind of the color we've chosen, but I'm struggling with that. I understand the feedback and I get it, I just don't, engineers and color don't make me pick.
Yeah.
I mean, just walking here today on my way to City Hall, I walked by the skate park where we have the, we have essentially that brick stamped concrete as part of this, part of the skate park, and it looks pretty good.
What color is it?
It's brick colored.
Brick color?
Yeah, brick. Yeah, just red brick.
Oh, red brick color.
Colored, yeah. But I just think anything other, I just think gray on gray on gray is not going to be helpful. I think that might create more problems.
We'll see if we can find something else.
Yeah, on green, no.
So yeah, I guess, can you post signage at both locations on 66th and 194th as well as, I mean, to try to get the vote, to get people aware that, hey, there's going to be a change here?
Well, if we're going to do a vote, we would do like we already have. We would go back to the area that we mailed postcards to, and we would send them a postcard and door tag like we just did for 75th and 67th and have them do an online survey.
And not post signage?
But for construction, once, you know, we decide with the community and you what we're going to do, we can post lots of signage out in the field, letting people know they're coming. We can put flyers that people can take talking about the why, and then kind of project information.
Okay.
So that's something we thought of.
You know, the mayor mentions an idea. What if you did put a sandwich board sign at that intersection saying, "Proposed intersection change," and then there's a little flyer they can grab that's on the sandwich board sign, and then they can see how they can vote.
But the voting is for the people that live to benefit from the improvement. It's not for everyone.
Yeah, that's a good point. Okay.
That's my opinion.
Yeah.
Deputy Mayor?
Okay, two things. In the Maple Leaf area, north, in the north end of Seattle, south of Lake City Way as you're approaching the freeway, I go down through there as I'm going to University of Times, and there's traffic circles at every intersection, and they do slow you down. And in contrast to these intersections, those intersections are really tight. I would say that the cross-sectional or the diagonal dimension is probably half on those as what's in these intersections. And the circles appear to be about the same size, so it's really tight going around. You have to slow down. Not only that, but there's parking on both sides of the street approaching and the other way, and traffic can't go past one another anyway, so it really slows you down. Those traffic circles are all planted, usually with a tree in the center. And yes, I guess you could drive over them if you were careful to miss the tree. But my comment about the landscaping is that Kenmore does a better job of maintaining our landscaping than the city of Seattle does, but those look pretty ratty. And the stamped concrete is really at lower maintenance, and I think it'll look nice over a longer period with minimal maintenance.
Anybody else?
I just want to reiterate, people not being familiar with things with a new device, it just doesn't register with a lot of folks. And so that's my only fear with the stamped concrete mountable traffic circles is people will come up to it and go, "What the heck is this?"
Aren't there traffic circles on 62nd where we're doing the sidewalk? Is that still in the plant?
Yeah, those are common, those, yes.
Will they be the same kind?
Those will be planted.
It's a very similar design, yeah. We worked with the same consultant to design something that looks similar.
So there'll be two or three there, right?
Three.
Two on 62nd, south of?
Three planted, three planted ones on 62nd.
Okay, plus the two, and so there'll be six of these growing in about the same time.
Yeah, my, I'm just talking about planted versus stamped concrete mountable.
Okay.
Comment? Would we send out the request for people to vote? We could say drive by the post office, because it'll be the same as there, right?
They aren't voting on this one, though.
Yeah. What's that?
I don't think, they're not voting on the stamped one, are they?
It's not one of the, one of the options is just figure out the yield, so find out which leg issues the most and do something like that versus a roundabout with the stamped.
That was a planted one.
Oh, is that a planted one?
The one at 66th is planted or not?
It could either be a planted, a large planted, or it could be a smaller diameter stamped.
I think we should make them all look the same.
I think we should all look the same. I don't think people are going to maintain those things out in the middle.
Yeah.
And I don't think we have enough to do.
So, yeah, for that, for that purpose, it would be a smaller diameter stamped.
Especially since the people that live adjacent to that, one on 66th are against it, and so asking them to maintain it might not go over well.
Councilmember Herbig?
I would just remind everybody that, you know, the reason why we're doing any of this is because of safety, and I would, I'd be reluctant to give up safety by making the traffic circle smaller because one person owns a truck and may have to drive a slightly different route to get out to 68th. You know, we do need to look at what's better for the entire neighborhood and not change how we approach safety based on one or two people. So just something to keep in mind.
Councilmember Danuski?
Yeah, I just wanted to either second or third the comment on, I would, I would love it if the stamped ones are not gray on gray as well. Thanks.
All right.
I like that.
You need direction from us?
Well, our recommendation, as you see on the slide there, is to do the neighborhood vote for 66 with the two options, and then not do a neighborhood vote for the ones on, is it 62nd? Yeah. But post signage in advance. We can actually post a sign there at those two intersections saying, "Hey, this is coming."
So you can't post the sign, "This is coming" on 66th and 194th either?
We'd rather do the, we'd rather do the vote.
I'm just thinking, the vote, people might just ignore it. If they saw the signage, they might be more apt to.
But as Chris pointed out, if you have signage, see, if you're doing a vote, you want to restrict it to the people who are affected.
Okay.
But if you do a sign, then you're inviting everybody to vote, and you don't know if they might be coming from Kirkland or?
All right.
What's really effective is the door tag, because I, you know, we did that, and that's what we got, the bulk of. So we'll do both. We'll do a postcard and then we'll do a door tag.
What we're learning is a lot of people don't check their mail very much or very frequently, and if they do, they treat a postcard like that, like just junk mail, and they just toss it. So the rate at which people actually look at it and comprehend it is getting smaller and smaller these days. So doing a double whammy with a mailer and then a door hanger has been more effective.
All right. So the chair will entertain a motion to proceed with staff's recommendation, neighborhood vote and supposed signage.
So moved.
And I'll second that. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
Okay. Thank you so much. I'm glad we have some direction from you on this. This is great.
Yeah, thank you all.
Thank you again for all your hard work on this. Thanks.
I will just, I will, wait, just a quick comment to finish up on this. I am thankful that you didn't ask us to bring all 82 or 90 projects to us and have this level of discussion.
Okay, I got a few things. Nancy Owsley, if you could come on up and talk a couple of things really quick. In the meantime, there's a couple of things that have already happened that have come out of For the Love of Kenmore Phase Two that happened at the beginning of this month. One is we've already had a neighborhood adopt a, adopt a corner project already started, and that's, some citizens, I think just last Saturday, attacked a corner on Simons, and so that's fun to see. Those folks attended, what they did is they did some blackberry removal and some beautification at a corner, and that came out of the For the Love of Kenmore event. Also, an attendee offered to translate our welcoming city resolution into Spanish, and she's done that, so we're going to get that out. And then also Kent Vaughn, the creator of Hank Heron, is going to put Hank feet at the crosswalk on 181st. Now, what you see here, those don't really look like Hank feet, and I'll show you actually what it's going to look like.
So you've heard of Bigfoot. Well, we have Big Hank. And this is how it's going to go on that crosswalk. So.
Don't paint them different colors, or they may think they're tulips.
Yeah, I was going to say, they look like tulips.
So we have little Hank feet already in some sidewalks throughout the city, but these big ones are going to the crosswalk. I'm sure it'll generate lots of.
Is this crosswalk right there by the post office? Is that where you are?
No, it's at Safeway, right there on 181st.
Oh, okay.
Oh, got it.
Yeah. And they'll get installed next, so when they do the paving next week, weather depending, that's when they'll put in this crosswalk.
Are those painted, or?
They'll be the thermoplastic, the white thermoplastic like the crosswalk's going to be.
Okay. That aluminum isn't implanted in there? Okay.
Yeah.
And then Stacy, you can use them for your spray.
That'd probably work better than my cardboard one.
And then Nancy Owsley has a couple of items.
Good evening. I'll be quick on this. We were approached by a business to lease the portion of the, we call it the shell property, that's now already under lease, for two or three weekends for plant sales. You might remember that a few years ago, a business did this, just, they advertise online, they have a good following, and so we're working with JSH, our property management organization, to come up with a short-term arrangement for that use. I think the first weekend could be May 6th and 7th. So that, and what was the other item you wanted me to cover?
Mary's Place.
Okay. That's what I thought. I think we covered this in some of the one-on-ones over the last few weeks. Mary's Place, a nonprofit in Seattle that works with families with children who are in need of housing, temporary housing, is, they have submitted permit application to occupy the former sheriff's precinct, which, as you know, has been unoccupied for several years. And so we are working with them to kind of get the word out to not only the immediate neighbors, but to the community at large. And so you can be looking for notice of probably at least one community meeting, but then outreach to the immediate neighbors on a more, you know, one-on-one basis with them as well.
And we're going to have an article about it in our citywide newsletter that's going to be going to print this week.
Yeah, and, yeah, in good discussion with them and with county staff as well.
And then two franchise issues while I have you here, Nancy. You had PSE franchise negotiations last week. Just really quick, how did they go?
Went very well. And you probably saw a real en, a saw in the, in the audience tonight, and I think it really, really helped that we had a very detailed and well-thought-out list of what our position was going to be going into those discussions, and that was no surprises, you know, to them, and they knew that the council was supportive of the position. So I, you know, don't want to make predictions, but I think that we could be coming back to you for either further guidance or action in the next few months. Sometimes these things take a long time, but I do really believe that PSE is motivated to get something resolved pretty quickly. Obviously, their leadership is very engaged and interested in improving what's going on in Kenmore.
And then on Frontier franchise enforcement, as you know, we've been making progress on that, including assessing liquidated damages against Frontier. We're getting pretty close to taking the next step or the next level of enforcement, and we'll definitely be going public with that as well when we, when we do that.
That's something we've mentioned in individual council meetings over the last couple of weeks. So that's all for me.
That's it?
That's it. That's it. Comments, reports, initiatives? Um, Councilmember Danuski?
Nothing to add.
Deputy Mayor?
Wednesday nights, the open house at the Link Building, I think we've all been invited to that, should be interesting. Um, seen your mind, okay, move on. Remember I had another thing.
Um, Councilmember Herbig?
Nothing to add.
Councilmember Curtis?
Nothing to add.
Councilmember Sperry?
Wanted to congratulate our city manager on five years of service to our city.
Oh.
And I, um, was so pleased to, to read in the update about how the staff all high-fived you and all that, and I thought, well, we can't quite do that, but anyway, we really appreciate it, and you're actually my third city manager, and, uh, I just really appreciate your creativity and your leadership, and, you know, we've, we've had some of staff that have served under all three, and the level of productivity and engagement and enthusiasm is by far the greatest under your leadership, and I really appreciate that.
Councilmember Smith?
Nada.
I too have had three, and, uh, you're the best. Uh, and with that, we are adjourned.